Thank you. Good evening councillors, officers and our viewers live streaming tonight's meeting. My name is councillor Enna Messina and I'm the mayor of Darabben City Council and the chairperson of tonight's council meeting. It is my pleasure to welcome you all to tonight's meeting. I can declare that the meeting is open at 6pm and we currently have quorum in the chamber. Item number two, acknowledgement of traditional owners. Darabben City Council acknowledges the Wondry Warong people as the traditional owners and custodians of the land on waters we now call Darabben and pays respects to the elders, past, present and emerging. Council pays respect to all other Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander communities in Darabben. Council recognises and pays tribute to the diverse culture, resilience and heritage of Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people. We acknowledge the leadership of Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander communities and the right to self-determination in the spirit of mutual understanding and respect. The health and safety and wellbeing of our community has and will always be paramount consideration of the council. Council continues to be guided by the government directives and wants to be able to do the right thing for the health and wellbeing of our community during the COVID-19 pandemic. At Darabben, we pride ourselves on being a progressive and contemporary council. In the interest of demonstrating leadership, I have high expectation of how we will contact ourselves in terms of language and forthfulness and throughout the evening and we will be respectful in our robust debate. This chamber, virtually or in person, is both a workplace and a public space and we have an obligation to ensure that the working environment and public forums are safe for all, both emotionally as well as physically. Membership, before we commence, I'd like to introduce the councillors and the senior staffs with us this evening. We have with us the deputy mayor councillor Trent McCarthy.
Good evening Mayor.
Councillor Emily Dimitriades.
Hi.
Councillor Gaetano Greco.
Hi.
Hi. Councillor Tom Hannon.
Good evening.
Good evening. Councillor Tim Lawrence.
Good evening.
Councillor Suzanne Newton.
Good evening Mayor and councillors.
Councillor Susan Rennie.
Good evening.
And councillor Julie Williams.
Good evening.
Thank you. And our officers tonight in attendance are Ms Lachelle Olivia, acting CEO, Sam Hewitt, general manager operations and capital, Vanessa Petrie, acting general manager city sustainability and strategy, Sarah Noel, who's the acting general manager of governance and engagement, Shadi Hannah, who's the acting general manager of communities. Finally, before we commence, I'd like to welcome Mr John Watson, who's been appointed by the minister for local government as a municipal monitor to the Darabben City Council. As councillors, we'll be aware that the minister announced prior to Easter that a municipal monitor was to be appointed to assist council with its implementation of improved governance practices and to develop a robust and transparent chief executive officer recruitment process. Mr Watson is highly respected and experienced local government official who has held senior roles in the sector for over 40 years. As a chief executive officer of former Shire of Buas and then Hume City Council, as an executive director of local government Victoria, chief administrator of the city of Brinkbank, to highlight just a few, on behalf of my colleagues, I welcome John and we look forward to your advice and guidance over the coming months. Thank you and let's get underway. Apologies, I note there are none. Item number four, councillors, conflicts, disclosure of conflicts of interest. Are there any officers or councillors to disclose this evening? Councillor Hannon, thank you.
Thank you Mayor. I'd like to note a conflict for item 8.10 on the agenda. It's in relation to advocacy report, specifically the theme one area of environment, climate change and renewable energy due to my employment with the Department of Environment, Land, Water and Planning and my role in developing policy in this area. Further, I respectfully request, Mayor Messina, that council consider and vote on this theme one area separately to allow me to remove myself from the chamber for these specific deliberations and vote and return to participate in the debate and voting on the balance of the advocacy strategy. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hannon, noted and will attend accordingly during the agenda. Councillors and officers, are there any further conflicts? Ms Olivia.
Thank you Mayor. I will declare a conflict in regards to item 8.11 and 8.12. Essentially in my role as acting CEO, in both cases a conflict arises.
Thank you. Are there any further? Nope, thank you. Let's get the meeting underway. Councillors, item number five is confirmation of minutes of previous meetings. Councillors, could I please have a motion for the adoption of the meeting for the 28th of March and a special council meeting on the 14th of April? That was moved by councillor Ennie, seconded by councillor Greco. All those in favour? It is carried unanimously, thank you. Item number six, councillors, it's public question time. We will move to public question time. For those public question times received prior to 12 noon today, a response has been prepared where possible and these will be dealt with first, noting that they were received questions on similar issues. We'll be answering these collectively based on the themes and the issues they cover. Once these are dealt with, I'll invite members of the public who have attended this evening to approach the lecturn to ask the question. I ask that you read only your question as no introductory or background statements are not permitted pursuant to section 15.3 of the governance rules. The minutes of this meeting will record the question in full subject to complying with the governance rules. Please note that public question time will not exceed 30 minutes in duration unless extended to by resolution of council through a procedural motion, in which case it will only be extended for a further 30 minutes. The first question, I just want to check, is Ruth Jelly of Northgate in the gallery this evening? Right. This question will be number one. She has three questions. Number one, has council requested, received or analysed data from the recent National Ride to School Day as well as Super Tuesday cycling counts to inform its strategy, its transport strategy? Second question is, following media coverage in March of disability groups protesting the lack of accessible tram stops across Melbourne, can council provide an update on its plans for installing accessible tram stops on routes 11 and 86, including advocacy actions and funding applications? The next question is, the third question and final question is, the summary of the community consultation for Your Street, Your Say Group A indicates community support for the installation of separated bike lanes along the full length of Kramer Street, Preston, which is also part of the state government's cycling strategic cycling corridor network. Since the introduction of the cycling strategic cycling corridors project in December 2020, what action has council taken to seek state government funding for the installation of a separated bike lanes in Kramer Street? Once again Ruth, thank you for your questions and your commitment to this area. Council has not participated in the Super Tuesday bikes count since 2012. Instead, we use data from the Victorian Integrated Survey of Travel and Activity, ABS census data and data from council's permanent bike counters. It is a responsibility of state government to install accessible tram stops. We will continue to advocate to the state government for accessible public transport, including extending tram route 11 to Edward Street Reservoir and the upgrading the tram stops on tram route 86 to accessible tram stops. I've asked manager to, asked the manager to call you, who will discuss Kramer Street and Your Street, Your Say project with you. The next question we have is Roman Patrenko of Northgate. I understand he's not in the gallery this evening. And his question is, right now the website says that we should avoid any kind of bags in the green waste bins, even compostable bags. This discourages some people from putting food waste in the green waste bin due to concerns with smell and the need to clean the bin often. Some other councils such as Whittlesey allow usable compostable bags in the green bin and even send them out to those who opt in the green, using green bins. Is this something Darabben council could allow or consider? Thank you Roman for your question and interest in Fogo, which is the food and organic waste service. The process facility that we are currently use for our food and garden waste does not accept compostable bags. This is not an option for us to consider at this stage. We encourage residents to wrap food scraps in newspaper or paper towels as it helps reduce odour and mess. Adding layers of garden waste between food waste also helps. I understand an officer has reached out to you to discuss your question and help you make the best use of your curbside waste service. Is Ruth Liston of Northgate in the gallery? Good evening Ruth.
Thank you. Hi Mayor and councillors. Good to see you all and nice to see you back in person. The Sunday age this week, state MP for Northgate, Kat Theophanis, announced an offer of $20,000 to Darabben council to preserve Nine Hill Golf at Northgate. And this would effectively lock in the preferred model for the future of the space as advocated by Northgate Golf Hub and Golf Australia. This offer could be perceived as an attempted intervention in local decision making that would mean that the views of the many thousands of locals who participated in the yet to be released community consultation, as well as the perspectives of traditional owners, be dismissed. Were the mayor and all councillors aware of this offer before it was outlined to the age? And what efforts are council making to ensure the public are better informed about why the consultation report has not yet been released and to counter false allegations about a lack of transparency made in both the age and on social media?
Thank you Ruth for your questions. Council was not aware of the state government's offer until it appeared in the age on Sunday. Council has continued to keep the public informed about the progress of the consultation as much as possible. Final consultation with key stakeholders is underway and when all feedback has been received, council, along with the general public, will be provided with the results of this extensive consultation so that council can make an informed decision about the future of Northgate Public Golf Course. Are there any questions from other members of the gallery this evening? Please approach the lecturn and state your name and suburb please and your question.
Evening Mayor and councillors. My name is Justin. I'm from Preston. I'm here on behalf of the Bell residents group. Our questions all relate to the removal of the level crossing at Bell Station. Will council please provide to Bell residents the formal advice from the Alex RP showing that they rejected council's request to install turnbans from High Street into the local streets? Will council please explicitly state in Darabben's draft advocacy strategy 2022 to 2026 that council intends to turn Gertrude, Adeline, Esther and Shower Streets into know-through roads? And finally, will council advise the Alex RP and the Department of Transport of this intention urgently such that they are fully informed of the implications of this before car park construction at Bell Station is completed? Thank you.
Thank you and good evening and welcome again, Justin. I'm going to take that question on notice or did you want to say something, Ms Olivia?
Through you Mayor and thank you Justin for the question. I've taken some notes so I think I've got all three parts but let me know if that's not the case. So in regards to your request for that information, we can follow up tomorrow and I'll ask the responsible manager to do that with you tomorrow. In regards to your second question, council will consider the matter of the advocacy strategy tonight and so you can stay and watch the debate if you like or we can let you know the outcome of that afterwards. Sorry, would you remind me of your third question, Justin?
It's asking whether council will urgently inform the Department of Transport and the Alex RP of the intention to turn those local streets into know-through roads now such that they are fully aware of the implications of that decision before construction of the car park is complete.
So, that I think depends on council's decision in regards to the advocacy strategy? No. Certainly council has a resolution already established about this area of Bell Street and I'm really comfortable committing to reiterating council's existing position to the state government.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Justin. Are there any other questions from the gallery this evening? Mr Nugent.
Good evening and welcome, Mr Nugent.
Just one moment, wait for a microphone. Thank you.
Thank you Mayor Messina. I have three questions tonight. The first one, the council meeting on the 22nd of November was a closed, was closed to the public due to COVID-19. Two or three days later, there was another meeting. It happened to be the same week as the meeting on the 22nd of November 21. At this meeting, it was an announcement, it was the announcement of a new mayor in which people were invited. Mayor Messina, my question is, is, why were public or families invited to attend this meeting when only two or three days earlier that the meeting was closed to the public due to COVID? Why can't council follow its own advice and will council ask for the resignation of the person responsible?
Thank you. I'm happy to answer that. I have our governance check that for you, Mr Nugent, but as you know, government directives change daily. I'm not aware of what occurred back in November but I can assure you that government directives were followed. They were followed.
I'm afraid you're wrong there.
Can I please finish my statement? I'm going by my memory and I know that was addressed at that particular time. Densities and limits were put in place and my understanding is they were limited to only a small amount of family members on that particular meeting but I'll get an account, the governance officer, to review the government directives and get back to you tomorrow.
Just put in writing, that's fine, I'll wait for it. Okay, my next question. My question is about the sports lighting that fell down at number one oval, Donough Reserve Keon Park in July 2019. This is a disgrace by this council for not fixing above light. Council advised that these lights are not made anymore and if this happened, it happened to a big club like the Darabben Falcons, there would be, the whole lights would have been replaced and they wouldn't have a lighting problem. So Mayor Messina, my question is, when will this light be fixed up?
Thank you, Mr Nugent, once again. I'm not aware of that particular situation that you referred to back in July 2019 but my understanding is, and I could be wrong, but I think there is an upgrade of lights in that particular area, but I'll take that question on notice and have our community, acting manager of communities, get back to you tomorrow.
Thank you. And my last question for the night. My question is about the last council meeting held on the 28th of the 3rd. In that meeting, I asked three questions. One on Brian Shanahan and myself, in which the CEO answered. The other two questions were on the way, on why hasn't council have an internal process so people can get a fair hearing without going to the ombudsman? The other question was, how many people work in this council again, or council of men? How many women? How many men? How many are women or how many are managers and how many are men? Mayor Messina, I didn't ask for where I could find this information from. I asked if this information could be sent out to me exactly how I explained it, how many women, how many men, managers and so forth. Not the smart arse answer I got.
First and foremost, I'm not aware of the answer that was given to you, Mr Nugent.
I'm just telling you what the answer was, Mayor.
Thank you. And that is of course, subject to interpretation, whether it was done verbally or in writing. I'm hoping it was done in writing to you. I'm not aware of those answers myself. And I will first of all find out how that, first of all, the process of that, how that information was transferred to you or communicated to you.
It came by letter, Mayor. I can tell you. I'll give you all the information.
Okay, I'm happy. Mr Nugent, may I please finish?
Sure.
Thank you. So I will follow through with that answer to that correspondence in terms of communication, number one. Number two, in relation to how many females, how many males, I don't know the answer to that. Number three, what was the internal process as a fair? Are you referring to internal process for operational matters or direct communication with councillors?
Yeah, like if you've got a query with council, how can you get a fair hearing at this council not getting judged by a judge, jury by one person, only opinion?
Okay, I don't know what you're referring to in that. I have, I know our, if I may, our councillors receive direct questions directly from the community on a regular basis, from the streets, from communication by emails and by phone. So I'm not aware of one person only, but I can, I can ask Ms Olivia to perhaps...
I think your officers know well and truly what I'm talking about.
Excuse me?
I said, I think your officers would know exactly what I'm talking about.
So I've just been contacted by Ms Olivia, who wants to address your questions. But over to you.
Mayor, I might ask Stephen Mann if he can respond in regards to the questions that were asked last time.
Certainly, certainly through you, Mayor Messina. Mr Nugent, yes, I'm the officer who responded in writing to your questions for the last council meeting. Without going into detail of advice I'll give you, I'm happy to talk, either contact you separately after this meeting and explain that.
I won't be here, Steve, so you can contact me tomorrow, write a little with the answers.
Happy to do that, Mr Nugent. Thank you.
Something good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Nugent. Are there any further questions from the gallery? Thank you to those who have submitted online and those for your attendance. And if you don't hear from us by the end of the week in terms of the questions on notice, please contact me directly. Thank you. Item number seven, councillors, this evening, we have petitions and I understand there is a petition to be presented by councillor Dimitriades.
Thank you Mayor. I seek to table a petition seeking council's support for the construction of a sealed car park surface for the Pitcher Park in Alphington. I move the motion, sorry, I move that the petition signed by approximately 280 persons stating, the Pitcher Park unsealed car park on the corner of Mersall Road and Parklands Avenue in Alphington is the central access point and pedestrian thoroughfare to this heavily utilised sporting club amenity. The Parkside Sports Club and nearby residents have submitted numerous requests to Darabben City Council over many years to upgrade and seal the car park surface. Darabben City Council has made no formal commitment nor considered in their capital works budget to undertake this minor works amenity improvement. The present gravel and mixed stone surface becomes a water well and mud pit in winter and a dust bowl in summer. The uneven car park surface restricts disabled and elderly persons' access to the amenity. The Parkside Sports Club has elderly members and guests that visit the facility for events and functions and access via the unsealed car park is challenging, particularly in winter months. The car park surface is not adequately maintained and is subject to wear and tear by the Parkside Sports Club as well as Darabben City Council works as the playing field is accessed via the car park, for example, lawn mowing, ground maintenance, et cetera. Further, the Parkside Sports Club has two teams playing in the Football Integration Development Association. They are mobility impaired players or family and access to and from the amenity is challenging for them. The main club room, social and bar area, had new car park and flooring installed in 2019. Due to the car park's unsealed surface, the floor is either muddy or dusty as members and guests enter via the car park. In addition, vehicles exiting the car park, particularly in wet winter months, spread mud along Mersall Road and Parklands Avenue, which is an unacceptable mess to nearby residents. The Parkside Sports Club and local Alphington community is seeking a sealed car park surface at Pitcher Park. A reduction in noise, mud, dust and general ease of access to and from the Pitcher Park amenity will be of significant benefit to the Parkside Sports Club and the local community users. Be received and referred to the 2022-23 budget process as a submission.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor McCarthy. Seconded by councillor McCarthy. And you're seeking that to the CEO for received, to refer to the, thank you. Thank you, councillor. Are there any further petitions? Councillor Rennie?
Mayor, I seek leave whilst not exactly a petition. I have 50 drawings from children at Bell Primary School. The children have submitted these to me to present to council. And I suppose I would describe it as a visual petition, and the drawings relate to the children's ideas for the open space below the level crossing in Preston. I simply seek a motion from council that we accept these drawings and refer them to the open space team for consideration.
Thank you. Do I have a second, uh, councillor Williams? Councillors, are there any further petitions? No? Okay. Councillors?
Mayor Messina, I think we need to vote on...
Yeah, I was gonna say, we need to vote on, go back to councillor Dimitriades's and move of the petition and the seconded by councillor McCarthy. All those in favour? That is carried unanimously, and also the petition of the drawings. I wasn't aware that we were going to do the drawings because it wasn't listed on the agenda. That's what threw me. So all those in favour? It's been carried unanimously. Thank you. Councillors, we have a number of significant items on our agenda this evening. And I'm, and I'm going to be committed to ensuring we deal with the business listed with these as time limits also. To this end, whilst I'm permitting questions of officers prior to the commencement of each debate, as permitted by our governance rules, I'll be exercising my right under the governance rules to limit questions and direct the debate commence when I'm determined that sufficient questioning has occurred. I remind councillors that every item on our agenda has been subject to comprehensive councillor briefings, and you have been given ample opportunity to be informed about the issues under consideration this evening. Councillors, the very first report we have to consider this evening is item number 8.1, memorandum of understanding with Aboriginal Housing Victoria. I'll await. Officer? Councillors, are there any questions to the general manager? Is there none, councillors? Do I have a motion? Councillor McCarthy?
I'm going to move the motion as listed in the report.
Seconded by councillor Rennie. Councillor McCarthy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I'd like to start off, of course, by acknowledging the extraordinary work by both Aboriginal Housing Victoria and also our officers. And, of course, also our Darabbin Aboriginal Advisory Committee in the preparation of what is a significant moment for this council in its ongoing partnership with First Nations communities, and in this case, in particular, with the only, as I understand it from our presentation last week, the only and most significant Aboriginal-controlled housing cooperative organisation, being Aboriginal Housing Victoria. This is the first memorandum of understanding that is proposed by Aboriginal Housing Victoria with any local government in the state. And I think it's worth recognizing that point on its own. This is the first time this has occurred. It is significant, it is important, and it hopefully is one of many. And what, for me, I think is the most remarkable thing here is that there is such a strong alignment between both the values and aspirations of Aboriginal Housing Victoria, that commitment to self-determination, and of course, also that commitment that this council has. It's stated at the very start of our council agenda at every meeting, councillors, and that should come as no surprise. We have that commitment with both our traditional owners, but also with the many Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people that live here in the city of Darabbin. So this is significant for that reason, and hopefully sets the pace for many of these to come. What is also important is that in the context of an MOU, this is not simply a document which will sit on the shelf somewhere. This is a document which will drive action. And Mayor, as you know, and as all councillors would be aware, it makes specific commitments by Darabbin as an organization, which has both its own land parcels, its own planning powers, and its own advocacy capability to work in deep partnership with Aboriginal Housing Victoria to deliver outcomes on what is a huge gap in terms of housing for First Nations people in Victoria, many of whom we know in the past have called Darabbin home through the significant footprint of Aboriginal-controlled housing, previously through the state government program and now through Aboriginal Housing Victoria, and hopefully will continue to. We do not want this to be a city where Aboriginal people are priced out, are shut out because there isn't a housing opportunity available. And we're not just talking about lease arrangements, we're not talking about just social housing arrangements. We're also talking about that new frontier, which is in some respects in Victoria, an old frontier, which is the sort of the rent-to-buy arrangements, those arrangements which require that extra effort by council and then extra effort by other agencies. So Mayor, I commend the piece of work. I thank everyone that's been involved in putting this together, and I commend it to the council.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Councillor Rennie, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I'm delighted to support the MOU this evening. And I'd like to start by acknowledging that we meet on Wurundjeri land, on First Nations land. And in order for that acknowledgement to be meaningful, we have to consider how we ensure that Aboriginal people can be housed and are housed safely and affordably in insecure housing, quality housing, on Aboriginal land. And that means right here in this municipality. So the MOU has three priority areas of focus. The first is to explore the availability of housing stock in Darabbin for the Aboriginal community. The second is to explore rating options to provide Aboriginal Housing Victoria with rate exemptions or rebates for rates. And the third is to work in partnership to increase Aboriginal Housing Victoria tenants' wellbeing, community participation, and inclusion in council services and programs. So this is a comprehensive and holistic MOU, and I look forward very much to the things that will flow from it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Messina. Yes, I also stand to support the consideration of this report after a very informative meeting with the Aboriginal Housing Association just in this room last week. The commitment obviously been outlined by other councillors, and it's obvious the commitment. Darabbin remains the second highest population concentration in urban Melbourne for First Nations people. And we also are the second highest concentration of housing for this particular housing co-op in the state after the city of Shepparton. So these are still considerable things and responsibility on us to maintain capacity for this vibrant First Nations community in our city to continue living here. There are some challenges, and there's some great opportunities that were outlined by the Aboriginal Housing Association. Principally, that they've got agreements at the higher level of allocations and quotas over the new build, the big build that's happening in Victoria, the biggest build of social and affordable housing in Australia. That's very significant. The other thing that was significant, I found, was their workload in terms of the needs of the current tenants they house in temporary and extreme, well, temporary and social housing model. So that's a great deal of burden on that organization. And the way the money is being split going forward in Australia will also go into other areas which we mentioned, rent-to-buy and those sorts of things. So...
Ten seconds.
They're also looking to expand their operation in housing. And I think a challenge for us is that they actually favor salt and pepper and want to seek private-public opportunities that we may find challenging to meet.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Are there any further speakers? Councillor, councillor Newton, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I'll be brief. I just wanted to highlight one thing from the report that I think is really exciting, which talks about identifying any surplus council land for the purpose of building social or affordable housing in Darabbin. So Town Hall Avenue is well on the way with Housing Choices Australia in place to build social housing on that site. So really looking forward to seeing the opportunities that will come out of that. And also, I know that we're also looking to connect Aboriginal Housing Victoria with developers in Darabbin with the aim of drawing on big build funding to build social and affordable housing. So a big call out to any developers listening, that this is something we really want in our community.
Thank you, councillor Newton. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. Look, I'd just like to focus in on one particular aspect of this memorandum of understanding. Other councillors have covered it quite well. I think the key point of interest for me in relation to this memorandum is the identification of other land or airspace in the city of Darabbin, which could help to increase the stock of social and affordable housing for our Indigenous community. You know, why is this important? Well, it's important because, as a council, we need to go beyond symbolic acknowledgement and recognition of Indigenous people. And so this memorandum of understanding, I believe, goes a long way in that direction of going beyond acknowledgement. Also, why it's important, as councillor Lawrence mentioned, we have a high concentration of people of Indigenous background that live in this area. They live in this area also, and I would say predominantly because there are a lot of Aboriginal services in this area. There's a huge network of services from legal services, health services, sporting clubs, associations, which have called Darabbin their home, and they operate out of Darabbin. And it's important that the Aboriginal community can have easy access to these services. The best way to have easy access to these services is actually to live within the municipality where they can make use of those services. So just to sum up, I think I'm really looking forward to the next stage of how we take this forward in identifying land and identifying airspace where we can actually offer that up to increase the stock of Aboriginal housing in our city.
Thank you, councillor Greco. We've heard from councillor McCarthy, councillor Rennie, councillor Lawrence, councillor Newton, and councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers? Is there a none? Put that item to the vote. All those in favour? Fantastic. That's been carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. The next item or report we have to consider is item number 8.2, which is the naming of show court within Narangerry Stadium. Councillors, are there any questions to the officers? Is there a none? Do I have a motion? Councillor Dimitriades?
I'd like to move the officer's recommendation.
Seconded by councillor McCarthy. Councillor Dimitriades.
Thank you, Mayor. Last Saturday, the community open day for the new Narangerry Stadium at John Kane Memorial Park in Thornbury took place. And it was great to see so many community members and many sporting clubs who will make the stadium their new home, including Alphington netball club and Darabbin basketball club. We were all very excited to see this state-of-the-art new facility in the southeast ward, which also includes an impressive, brand-new, 340 new show court, seat show court that is going to be named tonight, hopefully. I would like to thank everyone who took the time to fill out our surveys about the naming options of the show court. And I am proud to support endorsing the name to be Auntie Patricia Ockwell Court to Geographic Names Victoria. I thank Auntie Patricia and the Ockwell family for their consent in proposing to name the show court. And thank you to Geographic Names Victoria for endorsing in principle support for the naming to be after a living person. The results were resounding, with 76% of people supporting the name Auntie Patricia Ockwell. Auntie Patricia Ockwell is a senior Wurundjeri elder who should have been in the 1956 Melbourne Olympic Games for running, and went on to have a large involvement with community and activism. In the 1970s, Auntie Pat began working in Aboriginal hostels. Her work at these hostels, including establishing relationships with local police and setting up a system that allowed young offenders to be released into Auntie Pat's care at the hostel until they needed to appear in court. For those who served their time and were due for release, Auntie Pat also established an arrangement for their final 28 days to be within the hostel so she could assist them with transitioning back to community life and getting jobs. I'm proud that our show court at Narangerry Stadium is being named after such an inspirational leader in the community.
Thank you, councillor Dimitriades. Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Councillor Dimitriades has covered it really well. I just second the sentiments to all involved. And also note that Auntie Patricia Ockwell's family has consented to the naming, which is an important part of this process. I'd also like to just recognize the fact that in these processes, obviously, council seeks to go through that consultation process. But ultimately, this is part of council's commitment under the breathing space strategy to name at least 50% of our places by Wurundjeri names. And so I just want to recognize the foundation for this commitment is not simply asking for a name. It is a very clear policy and commitment that this council has made. It is wonderful to see an example of that coming through in this occasion. And obviously, someone whose reputation and work so strongly resonates with what we are seeking to do with this facility, which is create greater access and opportunity for all. I also want to recognize that this name proposal has been incredibly well supported by the very people who pushed for this stadium in the first place. And I want to recognize those people, particularly Christine Johns and the many other local netballers and coaches, captains, and of course, players, who I think made up a significant number of the survey respondents. And we're delighted to see both the name of the total stadium and also the show court. So I want to thank them all for their participation. And also congratulate Auntie Patricia Ockwell's family. And of course, just recognize also the very notable other suggestion as well, which was Marcia Ella Duncan, and the report goes into why that nomination couldn't proceed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Are there any further speakers? Is there a none? I put that item to the vote. All those in favour? That is proudly carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. The next report we have to consider this evening is item 8.3, awarding the CT 202156, sorry, double 156, contract management of the Bundura Public Golf Course. I'll wait for the officers, and then I'll ask councillors, are there any questions to the officers regarding this item? Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. If I can just seek from officers, I know that obviously this report is confidential in terms of the detail. But if officers could just share for the benefit of councillors a little bit more information about how the assessment process for this particular tender responds to council's social and sustainable procurement framework, in particular, the concept of social inclusion. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor Messina. So in terms of the evaluation, there was evaluation of council's social procurement policy. So that looked at employment outcomes, potential partnering with local businesses, as well as potential traineeships for young people and people from, people Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. And as well as looking at environmental sustainability. So all submissions were evaluated against that criteria.
Thank you. Are there any further questions, councillors? Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I'd like to move the officer's recommendation, and that is that council awards contract CT 202156 for the management and operations of Bundura Public Golf Course to Club Links Management, PTY LTD, for the guaranteed net return of $1,376,685 GST-inclusive. I think those are the things that needed to be populated, and that's correct on the screen. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm assuming you were seconding that, councillor Lawrence. Glad you see your hand up. Thank you. Councillor Rennie, would you like to speak to the motion?
Certainly. This is a really important contract award because it signals the way moving forward for the Bundura Golf Course. And it's really evident from the contract award what a viable and popular golf course this is. So this is our 18-hole public golf course. And I'm delighted to see such a strong return that is anticipated over the life of the contract, which would be $4,820,783 GST-inclusive, with potential, if the golf course is well used and profits go over and above that, for a further return to council. But more importantly, I think this contract award will move us on the path towards Bundura Public Golf Course being the most inclusive public golf course in Victoria. And that's something we've talked about in the past. I think that's something we'd all like to see, a golf course where there is a true diversity of people playing, where there is a diverse workforce, and where everyone can feel engaged and included in the game of golf. Importantly, the paperwork that we have... Importantly, the paperwork that we have demonstrates the rigor of the council procurement process. There were a number of tenderers, and I think that shows that there's a really healthy market, and that has assisted with this great result for council. So on that basis, I commend this contract award to my colleagues, and I'm certain that it will be supported. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Rennie. Councillor Lawrence, would you like to speak to item number 8.3?
Just briefly, Mayor Messina, it's been covered well by councillor Rennie. This 18-hole golf course is extremely popular. It also has strong representation in terms of gender, in terms of players as well up there. And the other issue, of course, with Bundura is it sits within the Bundura Park environment, so it actually assists us with habitat biodiversity protection along that side of the creek that does not have paths and things, and has a very healthy population of native species, including eastern grey kangaroos. So there's a range of things, custodianship issues, that fall not just in this golf course, but across the whole 180 hectares of this council that we're responsible for. And again, having direct management of this golf course is very important when we're overall managing competing needs of dog owners, park visitors, walkers, joggers and golfers.
Thank you councillor Lawrence. Are there any further speakers? Councillor McCarthy?
Thanks mayor. I support the statements of my fellow councillors, and thank councillor Lawrence for also recognising the eastern greys that also call the area home. I'd just like to draw councillors' attention to part of the report without going into the specific details of the tender, this is in the public report, but just to draw councillors' attention to how the assessment of this particular tender has been through that social equity lens. It was touched on briefly in the questions, but we can't go into all the specifics, obviously, in the chamber, but one of the critical things that has been considered here is the notion of a facility inclusion plan, which really sets some targets and resources about who participates here, how they are reached out to, how they are engaged, how they are made to feel welcome, not just in terms of participation as players, but also in terms of employment and training opportunities. And I would like to recognise the comments of our officers early about the particular focus on the potential for traineeships, for a diverse workforce and a workforce at the site there, which is reflective of the communities through which we wish to attract to this site. So that's really important. The other element which is really important here is a real, a strong focus on health and wellbeing, to understand that any open space can deliver a variety of outcomes, as our breathing space strategy tells us. But what is critical here is that if we are seeking for people to use this space, we actually, for golf and for other activities, as is outlined in the report, we need to make sure that it is response to all the needs that people have when they are there on site. So that comes down to a focus on disability inclusion, it comes down to a focus on gender inclusion, it comes down to a focus on intergenerational engagement.
In seconds.
Mayor, I'd really like to commend the work of our officers in getting us to this point, and wish the successful tenderer all the best.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I just want to make a couple of points. First of all, I think receiving seven tenders, I believe there were seven valid tenders and one invalid tender, I think that that's an indication of the strength of golf and the growth of golf across the city and across the broader metropolitan area. And also, the point that needs to be made is councillor Rennie touched on this, is the return to council. It's a two-year contract, plus two, plus two, which means a potential six years, and over the six years, there could be a $4.8 million return to council. That's a significant return to council. And also what it shows is that notwithstanding the social inclusion approach that the tenderer has taken, that that can also be made, also can be achieved whilst also making quite a significant profit. So it's the marrying of the two things together, and I think that the tenderer has been quite creative in ensuring that council not only receives a financial dividend, a significant financial dividend over the six years, but also receives a significant social dividend, and where the two are not mutually exclusive, and the two can actually complement each other. So I commend the tenderer, and I commend the work that the officers have done in ensuring those objectives were met.
Thank you councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers? Councillors, as there are no further speakers, I'll now put item number 8.3 to the vote. All those in favour? That's been carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. The next report we have to consider councillors, item number 8.4, the contract award CT 202128, Provision of Engineering Advisory Services Panel. I've got the officers in front of me. Do we have any questions to the officers? You've got questions?
Yes.
Councillor Rennie and then councillor Greco.
Thank you for you, Mayor Messina. I note that in category eight, disability access services, we're not recommending appointment due to a demonstrated lack of specialised expertise. Could you give us an idea of how council will make sure that we meet our requirements in this area with that a panel?
Through you, Mayor Messina. We'll go specifically to out to market again. We didn't, the submissions we got on that category was only one, and they didn't show an expertise, so we'll go out to market separately for that sort of occasion.
Thank you. Before we go to councillor Greco, did you want to say something, Mr Hewitt?
I have a question also.
Councillor Greco, just one moment. Mr Hewitt wanted to add some commentary, then we'll go to you, if that's okay? Thank you, Mr Hewitt.
Thanks for your indulgence, mayor and councillors. I wanted to point out one, what we're calling administrative error, mayor. In the executive summary, we've listed category one in the public report as transport engineering and transport planning services, and category two as civil engineering and civil design services. They just need to be flipped around. I wanted to assure the council you can confidently make a decision today. The rest of the report, the recommendations from the tender evaluation panel, the tables in the report and the attachments are all correct, just in the executive summary, mayor, they need to be turned around.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr Hewitt. Councillor Greco, you may ask your question.
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I just had a question, just in relation to the pool of panel of tenderers that we're acquiring as a result, if we pass this tonight, is what consideration has been given to the social procurement policy? Because I couldn't find much reference to it in the report.
Thank you councillor, through you, Mayor Messina. The social procurement was part of, sorry, in line with council's social and sustainable procurement policy, areas of social procurement were assessed, the recommended companies all demonstrated a good level of commitment to these principles, to name a few, including cultural awareness training, partnership with universities and training organisations, fair work practices and employment of Darabben residents. So yes, it was included.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any further questions? Councillors, do I have a motion for item number 8.4? Councillor Williams?
Thank you.
We're not speaking to the motion, just wanted to know, are you moving the officer's recommendation first with inserts?
Yes, I am.
Great. Seconded by, so that's moved by councillor Williams, seconded by councillor Rennie. Councillor Williams?
Okay, thank you. Usually council actually has these number of reports that come to us as contracts through awards that we fill, and what officers have done here, they've actually collaborated a whole heap of contracts to put together, instead of going multiple times to a number of different companies to see which ones will be awarded. Council has actually put together a number of these, so it's easy for the officers to actually go out to tender and just go directly to the contracts that have actually been awarded for those particular areas. So we're talking about the civil engineering, we're talking about transport engineering, electrical engineers, the mechanical, the hydraulic and structural and hazardous materials and associations. So I'll go through the first one. The first one is the civil engineering and civil design services has been awarded to CRE Consulting Engineers Proprietary Limited. Number two, which is the transport engineering and transport planning services, is going to Traffic Works. The electrical engineering services via panel arrangement will be awarded to...
Mayor, point of order, could I just get some clarification?
Yeah.
Because I think councillor Williams, they're on the screen, but the awards are actually to multiple companies, so just for the purposes of anyone listening who can't see the screen, it might be worth clarifying.
Because it's changing each time, so if we go to item number one... Back to item number one.
Well, instead of reading all of them out, because we'll be here for the next 10 minutes, it's probably best to, if we can load up on our website, what those contractors are that have been awarded, that we have limited, that we have actually abbreviated from the ones that have actually applied. And I just want to say a big thank you to all the contractors that have applied, and congratulations to the ones that have actually been awarded.
Thank you. Can we, are we able to vote based on that, or do we need to read them out? Can I just have some governance advice?
Maybe the second or wants to speak.
Yeah, but just before we do that, I need some governance advice. I think technically we need to read them out, or is the appendix enough? Yep, just one moment. So this is what we're going to do councillors, we're going to go through item number one, and then vote on that particular section in terms of the appendix, and I'll ask for votes. If there's anybody that wants to ask any questions in relation to that or vote against it, it'll be noted. So all those in favour with item number one, please.
Sorry, mayor, we haven't had the debate yet.
Oh, of course. Apologies. Over to you councillor Rennie.
Look, I'll keep brief, and this relates to all items. I think it's worth explaining that the reason we do these in this way to create a panel is because by having a panel, we have the ability to respond quickly and efficiently to issues in the municipality as they arise, so that if there are issues requiring quick design or construction or engineering services, we don't for each job then have to go out to tender, and that is fundamental to council being able to respond to concerns if and when they occur in a really timely manner. So thank you councillor Williams for what you said, I won't repeat that, but I highly commend the officers, it's a significant amount of work undertaking this kind of procurement process. You can see from the number of different areas and the number of contractors who have been appointed to our panel, what a significant exercise this was. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Rennie. We don't normally do things this way, but that's, this actually can be quite sufficient. Are there any further speakers? So I'm going to go item by, page by page as they appear on the screen. All those in favour of what's on the screen at the moment? Thank you, that's been carried unanimously, if we can turn the page. All those who agree or want to vote on the, all those for the items on the screen at the moment. Thank you, that is carried unanimously. And the third one, all those again in favour of the names on the screen at the moment. Thank you, that is carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. Councillors, the next item on the...
Mayor, there's a couple more pages.
Oh, was there?
Yeah, there's nine.
All those in favour of the item on the screen at the moment? What, we're not, sorry, we're not all listening, sorry. Councillors, councillor Greco?
Haven't we voted for number four?
No, we haven't. Have we voted for this item? I've just noticed that councillor Greco wasn't...
This is the highest...
Up to four. So we've voted up to four? No. I've voted up to three. Yes, four. But I noticed that all councillors weren't listening to this particular item. Councillors, in relation to, this is, we voted up to one, two and three, so all those with item number four, the vote. Thanks. The next item. Councillors, we've got, once again, item number five. All those in favour? That's unanimously carried. All those number six, all those in favour? Unanimously carried. All those in seven, all those in favour? That is carried unanimously. Council, was there not? Item number eight was authorised to general manager, and item number nine was also authorised to general manager operations and capital to review. Councillors, all those...
We'll need to vote for those.
Yeah.
I don't think we do. We've already voted.
We're authorising their general manager.
Oh, okay, the last digits, okay, yeah, 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 we need to do that. Yes, we do. All those, councillors, as I said, this was done a little bit differently than usual, so we've got item number eight and item number nine, you've all got that in front of you, so we need to collectively vote on those particular items. All those in favour? That's been carried unanimously. Thank you for that. That's a first for Darabben, I've never seen it done that way before. Councillors, all, the next report to consider is item number 8.5, the contract award for CT 202160 Hard Waste Collection Services. We'll ask for the officers, and if there's any questions to the officers. Councillors, are there any questions to the officers? There are none. Councillors, do I have a motion? Thank you, gentlemen. Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I'd like to move the officer's recommendation. That is that we award contract CT 2021110 for an area based in seasonal booked hard waste collection service to WM Waste Management, an annual cost of $915,200.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Newton? Councillor Rennie, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. It's probably no surprise to councillors that I'm moving this item once again, because I suspect I'm the councillor most committed to hard rubbish, that is most committed to recovering and recycling everything I can find. In fact, it was my great pleasure last year to participate in the Darabben Hard Rubbish Heroes Recovery Exercise, where we scoped out items in a live stream and offered them to people. And I think this is important, in my way of thinking, because I was a little surprised to read that only 20% of hard waste collected is recovered or recycled. And obviously, in the longer term, I think that is something we would all like to change. But in relation to this year's collection, I'm really pleased to support the officer recommendation in relation to this award. Once again, there has been a council procurement process which has been applied rigorously to ensure that our council and in fact, our residents and community get best value for money. And, you know, in the longer term, I do think that there is a question for council around how we continue to provide a service to community members, but one that hopefully looks for ways to increase recycling in this area. I think I'll keep it brief. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Newton?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. Just continuing on from what councillor Rennie said, what we're talking about tonight is just awarding a contract, but I think it is worth noting just what a great service we do provide here at Darabben, and what we might be looking at next. So it's a very, very well-used hard waste collection service. I came through Moreland this morning, and I know how theirs isn't going so well at the moment, so very proud of Darabben's service. And you can see from the report that it's really well-used by residents, and has increased from 12,000 collections in 2013 to currently approximately 40,000 collections. And as we go forward after this, we're going to be looking at reviewing the service, potentially looking at on-call, and the best practice for this way of doing things. So really looking forward to both going ahead with continuing the service as it is, and to seeing how we review it to get the best service and the best opportunity for our community, which I think is a really big, big recycling community, big on reusing, particularly councillor Rennie.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I'd just like to say a few words in relation to this. I think on the first term of our council back in 2010... Um, I think on the first term of our council, uh, back in 2010, uh, we actually, that council actually introduced the Hard Waste Rubbish Collection, uh, the model that we have today. We moved away from a booking system to, um, having a Hard Waste Rubbish Day allocation, and then also a, a spring booking, um, um, time later in the, in the year. And since we moved to this particular model, um, it's proved to be quite popular, as other councillors have pointed out. And, um, and I think that the community has actually grown very much used to, um, having that fixed day or fixed week where they put out their, uh, their hard waste rubbish on the footpath. And, uh, and what you see that's fascinating is the amount of recycling that occurs, as has already been mentioned by other councillors. So, um, when you put your stuff out on the footpath, um, in the beginning it seems quite a lot, and then by the end of the week before, um, it actually comes to be collected, a lot of it's actually been recycled to, to other homes, which is a really great thing to see. So it's a popular, um, service that, that we offer, and, um, the model up until now has proved, um, quite well, quite well received. And, um, and if there is a review, I look forward to the review on how we can actually further improve on the existing model that we have.
Thank you councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Lawrence.
Um, yes, uh, Mayor Messina, um, I'd like to support this, um, contract and this motion, um, and, uh, thank the officers for their work on this. Um, as was mentioned by councillor Greco, um, this service was, I think historically, uh, around, but it was certainly reintroduced on, back in 2010. And at the time, we were on a trajectory of abandoning it and, um, just having a booking service. There's a range of advantages in terms of dumping outcomes, and there's also a range of advantages in terms of dealing with a diverse community, in terms of diverse community, education and language, um, in having a time one where it's visually present that this is the time, um, to put things out. What's, um, probably missing from this report is the unofficial recycling that goes on during this period. Some of it is by, um, professional second-hand dealers, but some of it is by local neigh, um, neighbours. And that's sort of missing, and hopefully when we review this service, we might look a bit more strategically about how local curbside recycling amongst ourselves, uh, is an answer to landfill.
Thank you councillor Lawrence. We've heard from councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, councillor Greco, councillor Lawrence. Are there any further speakers? I'll put that item, 8.5, to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you councillors, that's carried unanimously. Councillors, the next report we have to consider is item number 8.6, Property Matters. Councillors, are there any questions to the officers? There are none. Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Williams.
Thank you.
Just one moment, councillor, you're moving the officer's recommendation, or?
Certainly.
Yeah. Do I have a second, uh? Councillor Rennie. Sorry, councillor Williams, you may speak to the motion now.
Uh, so this item is a discontinuent road adjoining to the rear of 138 Wood Street and 31 Maplewood Street in Preston. Uh, it's pretty straightforward, council has decided to discontinue this parcel of land and sell the road as it is no longer required for road purposes. Uh, it will be sold by private treaty to the adjoining owner of 138 Wood Street, Preston, in accordance with the cancelled sale of land, sorry, in cancelled sale of minor as, cancel asset policy. This is simply following a statutory discontinuance process. Notification was received by the residents, by residents wanting to require the site by all neighbouring adjoining owners, were notified, but no submissions of objections were received. Cancel will receive a numerous number of these, um, requests all the time, and, um, it's, we just tend to follow the, the statutory process to settle the discontinuance right away by publishing the matter in the Victorian Government Gazette.
Thank you councillor Williams. Councillor Rennie?
Nothing joined, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? I'll put item number 8.6 to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, that has been carried unanimously. Councillors, the next report we have to consider this evening is item number 8.7, the Reservoir Leisure Centre Health and Wellbeing Study. We'll wait for the officers. Thank you councillors, do we have any questions to the officers? Councillor Dimitriades.
Thank you, Mayor, I've actually got two questions. My first one is, um, about the climate emergency. Um, everyone will be impacted by climate change and those of lower socio-economic backgrounds may be further impacted. We also know that East Reservoir is at high risk of heat vulnerability. Um, so I'd like to ask, what is the Energy Star rating we're looking at for this redevelopment?
Can I just ask also, before we answer that, can we please speak to the microphone, bearing in mind there are people listening live streaming, that's all, maybe perhaps extend the arch of the microphone. Thank you.
Um, through you, Mayor Messina, and thank you councillor for the question. We are looking at a six-star, uh, rating for, for the facility.
Thank you, that is my second question.
You have a supplementary question? I thought, no. Do we have any further questions to the officers? Councillor Lawrence.
Um, yes, through you, uh, Mayor Messina. I was just, um, going through, um, the significant reports here, um, and noting also that we're being asked to endorse a proposed vision. I was just struggling to find, um, there was community input, um, to previous budget, um, and specifically into relation to improvements at Reservoir Pool, I think even regarding a 50-metre pool. Do, is that included in this report somewhere in the numbers of people that submitted? Uh, centre of course, historically high.
Thank you, Mr Hewitt.
Through you, Mayor. Uh, councillors, if you want to have a look at the numbers through the consultation, I think the OTM report, uh, I couldn't tell you which attachment, but the OTM report has quite a bit of detail on that.
Have a supplementary, councillor Lawrence?
Just a supplementary for clarity, I'm just trying to seek our own record-keeping on submissions to the previous budgets, the numbers of submissions on that.
Miss Olivier?
Might ask the team just to, uh, outline whether or not that information is in the report at hand. Um, I would, I would think that, um, it's not the lens that the team have put over the report, um, at this time, councillors. It is of course information we could provide councillors if they, um, on, on notice, but it's not in the papers in front of you.
Thank you, Miss Olivia. Are there any further questions, councillors? Now for the questions, councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Newton?
Can I move the officer's recommendation?
Thank you. Do we have a second, uh? Councillor Rennie? Councillor Newton, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. Um, so I'm really pretty blown away by this paper. I think it's the culmination of about two years of work over this, um, and much longer to think about what the best outcome for the Reservoir Leisure Centre going forward is. Um, I know that this was brought by councillor Lawrence to look really seriously about health and wellbeing, and I really think the work that the team has done to take that and run with it and come back with this concept of wellbeing hubs in three places across the community, looking at different aspects of what East Reservoir needs to improve their health and wellbeing outcomes, is really incredible work. Um, there's just a couple of things that I want to highlight particularly, um, in that when we're talking about the hub-based investment model over the three key sites, we're going to be looking at a total of proposed $60 million investment over the long term in this area. And with the expansion of Reservoir Leisure Centre, that includes a $36 million investment in this area, which I think is really incredible for the community. And I really see the possibilities for this centre to have a splash pad at T W Andrews Park, uh, which is such a vibrant place already. Um, to have that available for anyone to use, I think it's going to be incredible over the short term. And over the medium and long term, we're going to see big, big changes for this community, not just at Reservoir Leisure Centre, but right through East Reservoir. So I'm really excited about it, um, and looking forward to the next steps.
Thank you councillor Newton. Councillor Rennie?
I'll reserve, thank you.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Williams?
I have an amendment. That was circled around earlier today.
Is that acceptable to the mover and the second, uh?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Um, are there, would you like to speak to your amendment?
In reference to this, uh, I spent, probably, I think it was Easter, I spent until one in the morning reading, reading the feasibility. Um, I'd like to say a big thank you to our officers and the time that's been spent bringing this to council, because it was very informative. I also would like to say that it was in, it was also heartbreaking, um, to read things like the childhood obesity between ages of two to 17 years old living in Reservoir East was higher than the average, not just for the wider Darabin or Greater Melbourne, but for the Victoria overall obesity amongst adults. In 2017, Victorian Population Health Survey of Darabin residents reported experiencing high to very high levels of psychological distress. This is considerably higher than for the north-eastern Melbourne region and for the border of broader Victoria. Now, I find this very distressing, because this is in my ward. But from the papers and reading, there has shown the opportunity of addressing and how we can address the social health and inequalities for the Oak Hill particularly, Cheddar and broader city of Darabin communities. The recommendation has together taken three lenses, looking at people, places and experience essential to the proposed community hub approach to provide accessibility, place-based access to multiple services that reflect community need and experiences. These recommendations of supporting and interrelated actions to leverage and enhance the redevelopment of Reservoir Leisure Centre. The recommendations represent a shift in focus from Reservoir Leisure Centre being a place of a community to undertake physical activity to a community hub where all community members are welcome and are in, enabled to participate in a wide range of recreation, leisure and social activities. The Reservoir Leisure Centre feasibility study reimagines the role of a leisure centre and purposes a range of activities and contributes towards the inclusive community hub approach for everyone to access a range of purposes. It also highlights that if, if council was to do minor upgrades, or if council was to rebuild the Reservoir Leisure Centre the same way without offering anything new, the report highlighted you will only get the same mix of people engaging the use of Reservoir Leisure Centre, meaning it will not maximise customer satisfaction, you'll only get the younger, you will not even get the younger demographics there, nor will you be have the opportunity to increase engagement in the facility. It is in paramount that ensuring leisure activity preferences include culture and to be tailored for all ages. It also compared us to Frankston, where they said that Frankston rebuilt their facility with a 50-metre swimming pool, and now that 70% of the people who took part in the study actually now use the swimming pool to do laps.
Thank you councillor Williams. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Greco?
Yes, Mayor Messina, I have an amendment that I'd like to, um, present. It was sent earlier to the officers, so hopefully it'll come up.
We'll put that on the screen. Is that acceptable to the, to the mover and the second, uh?
No. Um, Mayor, could we just note that point four would still be part of this, um, motion now, if we could add point four back? Thank you.
Before we do that, I, I just need to get some governance advice, because, uh, we have addressed and in the chamber of debate in relation to a 50-metre pool, and I, in the la, in previous six months, um, I'd like to get some governance advice, that, given that we've already debated that item. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor Messina, I think what you're asking me to clarify is that, um, in accordance with, uh, our governance rules.
Yes.
You have a discretion, uh, to not accept any, sorry, you don't, as part of your duties and discretion, you must not accept any motion or amendment which you determined to be the defermentary, vague, there's a list of things, but also the same as or similar intent to a notice of motion or other motion, including lost or lapsed motions that have been considered by this council in the last six months. Um, my quick review of resolutions or motions of this council indicates that in February this year, notice of motion from councillor Williams, um, sought to receive a report on the construction of a 50-metre pool at the Reservoir Leisure Centre. Um, on that basis, unless the majority of council consent to this amendment being accepted and debated, um, you cannot accept it.
Okay, therefore.
Question of clarity?
Certainly. Councillor Lawrence?
Um, Mayor Messina, I'd like to rise. Um, I'm seeking some clarity, because a vote in 2020, um, authorised us to look at it, another vote just recently included it in a vision and advocacy statement, that actual figure of 50-metre pool. So.
We haven't, sorry councillor Lawrence, I don't think.
So are we actually voting against our own advocacy policy? We just voted weeks.
Just, just a moment, I don't think we're voted for the advocacy policy as yet, councillor Lawrence. Um, that's actually later on in our, in our, on our agenda. We haven't formally voted on that policy as yet. So, once again, um.
I'm referring to some additions that were made in a previous, uh, meeting.
Um, can I just go over to governance? Because my understanding is, and my recollection is, that we have not put in this chamber, we had no quorum, therefore we did not vote on the advocacy report, and it is item number 8.1 this evening. I'm not familiar with any other advocacy report that this chamber has voted on prior.
Through you, Mayor Messina, that's correct. The advocacy matter will be dealt with, uh, later, later this evening. Um, but just to repeat my advice, that unless the majority of the whole council consents to this being accepted and debated, um, you cannot accept it.
Thank you.
Just a supplementary on my clarity, it might, a point of clarification, it may actually be one of our vision motions on Capital Works, and that, uh, it was raised by another councillor and, um, passed in this council. Plus, obviously, the missing instruments of a motion passed here.
Okay, I'm not familiar with the vision statement that, what, in terms of the 50-metre pool inclusion, um, but I will take what you've said on board, councillor Lawrence. I've also take on board what Mr Mann has said, but, um, it, the, the ruling is clear, 3.3, the chairperson's duties and discretion, number, item number one, F, the chair, the chairperson must not accept any motion or amendment which is determined by the chairperson to be, item number F, the same as or similar to intent of a notice of motion or any other motion, including lost and lapsed motions, that has not been considered by council in the preceding six months, unless the majority of the whole council consents to it being accepted and debated on, or. Um, so I'm going to ask for a motion, I'm going to ask for a show of hands to determine where the majority of this council would like to include item number two, um, and item number three, based on prior, um, debates in this chamber. Can I have a show of hands if we want to include those items in this particular item? Consent to debate the inclusion of the, um, 50-metre pool in item number two and item number three.
Sorry, Mayor, can, before we, can you, can you just clarify, was it, was the advice, a majority, a majority?
So in other words, a show of hands, if we're wanting to, if, basically, the, item number three says the chairperson's duty and discretion. So what I'm asking is that we have had a debate prior in February, as noted by, um, the Mr Mann, Mr Mann, and unless the majority of the whole council consents to have been accepted and debated, then we, I'm going to ask for a majority ruling, whether we want this inclusion or not. So I'm asking for a show of hands if we are going to debate the inclusion of this item.
Point of clarity, uh, Mayor Messina, can I have an indication from officers? I know it's been deliberately omitted, but there was a motion over six months ago, passed addressing exactly to get options on a 50-metre pool.
Okay, well, that I don't have the answer to, so I'm going to ask for a 15-minute recess while we, perhaps, I'm, I'm assuming you have a number of questions, councillor Lawrence. Can you please address them with the governance officer? We're going to take a 15-minute recess. We'll come back at 7:45. Actually, I'll come, we'll come back at 7:45. Councillor Lawrence, would you like, can I, um, address that the live streaming, please stop? Councillor Lawrence, would you like, can I address that the live streaming, please stop?
Thank you, thank you. Before we begin, councillors, we were at item number 8.7 and we were going to... I was addressing the chairperson's duties and discretion, but before I do so, I'd like to hand over the microphone to councillor Greco, please. He wants to make an alteration.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Messina. Oops, it's disappeared. There we go. Just point three, where it says endorses the proposed vision.
Point two. It's point three.
The option of a 50-metre pool, that would be the highlighted area. And then, and, oops. Hopefully it'll come up.
We're doing amendment item number three. And councillor Greco, would you like to read out the amendment of the brackets on options for in item three?
I can't see it up on the screen.
Can we have it on the screen and then councillor Greco will scribe?
It's important we get the wording right. Therefore, point three will be consistent with, point two will be consistent there with point three.
That's the same one as, sorry councillor Greco, that's the same one as prior. My understanding is you have an amendment to that.
Well, that's it. Like, if I could see it again, I could tell you what the exact word it should be. So point two would be with the option of a 50-metre pool, yes? And then point three, with the option of a 50-metre pool? Yep, that's correct.
Okay. That's not what you showed me earlier, that's why it confused me. Councillors, as it states, we're looking at item number 3.3, the chairperson's duties and discretion. Item number one, the chairperson must not accept any motion or amendment which is determined to be by the chairperson to be F, the same as or similar to intent to a notice of motion or other motions, including lost and lapsed motions that has been considered by council in the preceding six months unless the majority of the whole council consents to have been accepted or debated. Councillors, I'm asking for a show of hands to address this particular item for the purpose or enter it into a debate. So all those in favour? That's councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Dimitriadis, councillor Messina, councillor Lawrence, councillor Greco. All those against? Councillor Rennie, councillor Newton and councillor Hannan. We have now included, that's been passed, so we will be including this and debating item number 8.7 as an amendment based on councillor Greco's motion. Do we have a second for this particular amendment? You're going to enter it to debate, yes? Seconded by councillor Williams. Councillor Greco, would you like to speak to this motion?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I was just wondering, just procedurally, whether the mover and the second want to adopt this amendment or not?
No. Councillor?
Look, I'll speak to my amendment then. Thank you councillor Messina. And first of all, look, I'd like to congratulate the officers on the substantial amount of work that's been done here. But just to speak to my amendment in particular is that we know that in the northern part of the city there is a capital investment deficit. Not only that, we also know from the SEFA index, which is that indicator of disadvantage, that the northern part of the city, particularly Reservoir and Reservoir East, it's particularly disadvantaged. It rates amongst one of the highest disadvantaged areas according to the SEFA index. So therefore that makes a call on us to make sure that we include all the possible options in future proofing what the Reservoir Leisure Centre is going to be in the future. We know that Reservoir is one of the largest suburbs in Melbourne with a huge population. And we know that the population is increasing and there's going to be a significant increase in the age groups of 0-14 years old and 30-44. So we really need to future proof this massive investment that we're making for the Reservoir area. And so it's important therefore that we look at the whole picture and to ensure that what is built there will not then be deficient into the future. The other thing too that should be noted in the report, that 80% of the users of the Reservoir Leisure Centre come from the Reservoir area. That means that if you interpret that another way, that people will not naturally go to another suburb like in Northcote where we are building a $63 million pool with a 50-metre pool. That people are not naturally going to go to Northcote to have a swim in a 50-metre pool or have school competitions and things like that. So it's important both from a disadvantaged perspective, from a capital investment perspective, and also to future proof the area in terms of the types of services that are provided in there. And also, I'd just like to say that of the four options that were considered in the report, none of the options actually made reference to a 50-metre pool. And I think that that was a greater mission in the way that this was devised. And I think we need to include that into the scheme of things so that we can make a more informed decision about the vision of the area.
Thank you councillor Greco. Councillor Williams?
Yes, thank you. Council needs to be responsive to the needs and desires of the local community in which it serves, thus contributing to improved participation rates and community satisfaction with the facility. Now, as my fellow councillors already mentioned, that we will be building a 50-metre pool down at Northcote. The nearest 50-metre pool from Reservoir will be, what, Coburg or Thomastown? Now, for anybody who would like to do longer laps or for a high school or any smaller school that would like to do a carnival, which usually involves a 50-metre pool, will have to go definitely outside their suburb. And those who have to take transport, including families, because not all schools will take a bus to those facilities, sometimes parents and families have to actually get there themselves, they would have to take transport. Now, to navigate transport from Reservoir to get to any of those other destinations is quite tricky because there is also a transport gap in connection in Reservoir. Now, this particular part of Reservoir has its barriers, has its mix of different cultures, but certainly has many, many challenges. And we need to ensure that what is built there, that it's inclusive to as many people as possible. I think it's important that we also think about, not only for today, but for our growing population. I don't want to be in a position that we've built something and then 10 years later we've actually outgrown it already. I think that would be very disappointing from that perspective.
Thank you councillor Williams. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Newton?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I'd like to speak against this motion. So my view is that including the option of a 50-metre pool makes it really contrary to what's in the report. So what they talked about in the ODM report and the other report is that they did look to the schools. They asked nine of them and it found that the future facility development priorities identified by schools did not include the need for a 50-metre pool. And I think it's worth quoting this part of the report that says, "Ultimately, when considering the complex and varied health and wellbeing needs that exist in the east reservoir and surrounding community, a 50-metre pool is not recommended as an option to respond to those needs or address the socioeconomic disadvantage that exists in the community." So councillor Williams has talked about the needs of the community. Councillor Greco has talked about the disadvantage, the SEFA disadvantage in the community and the 80% of the residents from Reservoir, or people come to this pool from Reservoir. So what the report talks about is that there's many new migrants to this area who may not have experienced swimming before, which is why the report recommends an increase to the hydrotherapy pool and to the learn-to-swim pool, which is what would make sense for this area. The other part that I really, really love about the report, and I do think this is relevant, is that it talks about moving, shifting focus from RLC being a place with community to undertake physical activity to a community hub where all community members are welcome. So the report, the OTM report showed that only 6% of respondents asked for a 50-metre pool. So the evidence base for a 50-metre pool is not there. The evidence base to expand a hydrotherapy pool and a learn-to-swim pool is there.
Thank you councillor Newton. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Hannan?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I'm speaking against this amendment. I wanted to just reiterate councillor Newton's initial comments about the really impressive work that's gone into these reports from external as well as internal experts, including over 60 peer-reviewed studies by university public, sorry, the School of Public Health at La Trobe Uni. The important, the most important consideration here is about outcomes. I'm all about outcomes. It's about how to get health, the best health and wellbeing outcomes for our community. It's not just about capital investment, although I do note that quite rightly the majority of capital projects in the 10-year plan are in the northern parts of Darabim. If you look at the report by La Trobe Uni, the most important factors in addressing disadvantage are welcoming and accessible, tool backgrounds, culturally tailored programmes, engaging with families in social groups, strength-based programming, socialising, creativity, leisure. These are the things that have been picked up so well in the recommended position. There's a range of new facilities and quite substantial investment proposed in the new site. The point is, you can't just include an option without saying the cost of that option or how you're going to do it. It's, we're talking about a specific site which has had
10 seconds.
approximately $15, approximately $3 million of investment in recent years. It's not, it's irresponsible to throw away that work and to start again at a site that is otherwise in sound condition. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hannan. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, Mayor Messina, thank you for allowing me to speak. Yes, I'm speaking in favour of this amendment moved by councillor Greco and councillor Williams. This actually just echoes a motion that has been passed by this council. I'll do the study later. I'm not going to bother with the admissions in this report. They are there for anyone who wants to pick them up, both the community response and also the resolutions of this elected council. This report obviously mainly addresses a notice of motion I moved back in 2019 after I was blocked by gagging motions from even putting the Reservoir Pool into a budget. So I'm not going to go through those things because I've got ample opportunity to do it elsewhere. But what this is saying is an option and the landscape, the community response, and we haven't done a full survey of the broad community, we haven't spoken to the secondary schools, but we have had masses.
Point of order. Just one moment, you need to state what item? There's no need, I've seen it in the report.
Oh, I'll rephrase it.
Can you please rephrase that? I've seen it in the report, councillor Lawrence.
We haven't spoken to the school communities of the secondary schools and the people who have older children. So one of the ways to expand the use of a facility is offer, as was noted with Frankston, opportunities that will bring more people in there. There's nothing to do in Reservoir, there's nothing to do there. Kingsbury is also an issue, but I'll get to that in my next amendment. So this is just looking at the option of it, which I have to say has been passed by previous motions of this council. Yet we have not still got, we still willfully haven't got options and considerations of it. I understand there's a preference for a $2 million splash pad instead of an $8 million 50-metre pool, but I would really get the figures in this chamber before we jump to that conclusion.
Thank you councillor Lawrence. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Dimitriadis?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm rising in support of this motion because it's about the option of a 50-metre pool. It looks at all aspects of having the Reservoir Leisure Centre rebuilt. And a 50-metre pool is obviously a great opportunity for, to allow further development of the site. Now, I just wanted to clarify a few things. Councillor Newton said that this is contrary to the report because nine schools were asked. However, I believe the majority of those were primary schools. We didn't go to a lot of the secondary schools in the area or the older children. So the consultation, and we, as councillor Lawrence previously mentioned, there wasn't broader community consultation about this particular, specifically about the 50-metre pool. When asked, now I'm just paraphrasing and I'd have to look at the video again. Councillor Newton mentioned that she made a claim that migrants basically can't swim so they need a hydropool and a learn-to-swim pool. I find that quite offensive and I believe that's just not how we should be making our decisions. What we're seeing is this report, or the actual rebuild of Reservoir Leisure Centre, will be, will take about five years, I'm assuming. It won't happen within the next few years, which means the kids that are now in grade six, they'll be teenagers and they will not want to be in a learn-to-pool or a splash pool. They'll need a 50-metre pool or a larger pool to actually make use of the site. And talking about, all about outcomes, which is what councillor Hannan said.
10 minutes, 10 seconds.
This is about the outcome for future generations. It's not about here and now and having a splash pool for the migrants that live in the area. It's about having a long-term proposal.
Can you please?
It's under 10.1. There's a couple of items which I found offensive, statements by councillor Dimitriadis. There's an inferred, an inferred racism or discrimination.
We don't need to enter into debate. I think I know which items you're referring to. Once again, I heard councillor Dimitriadis restate some of the comments from councillor Newton. Whether they're deemed offensive or not is not something that I deem to be offensive. It expresses a difference of opinion. It is under item number 10.1, valid points of order. Item number two, rising to express a difference of opinion or contradict a speaker is not grounds for raising a point of order. So I won't be ruling on that particular item. Councillor Dimitriadis, I'm assuming you've finished. You did have one more second anyway. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I think there's been a number of comments that have been misrepresented in this debate. And that's unfortunate because the perspectives that are being conveyed are all legitimate and reasonable perspectives and misrepresenting them is inherently unhelpful. I've read in detail
Sorry, ma'am, point of order. That's actually 10.1H. Councillor Rennie is claiming that there's a misrepresentation, but that's her opinion, that there's a misrepresentation.
She said misrepresentation, not misleading, so there's a difference between misleading.
But I'm saying that's misleading, that she's saying there's been misrepresentation.
I beg to differ. Again, rising to express a difference of what she stated is a contradictory speaker is not grounds for a point of order. So continue councillor Rennie.
Thank you. Much is being made of this issue of the 50 metre pool. And I think it's worth remembering that the vast majority of public swimming pools available to the community in Victoria are not and do not contain 50 metre pools. So a 50 metre pool across this state is not a standard pool offering that somehow has to be delivered everywhere or we are discriminating against people, which seems to be the inference. I'm a member of the Reservoir Leisure Centre and in fact I swam there this morning. I enjoyed a lane to myself, as I often do, and looked at a number of people enjoying various activities in the pool, including people engaging in water aerobics, people using the hydrotherapy pool. That was by far most used part of the facility and that's often the case. A lot of parents of very young kids using other, you know, the toddler kind of area. And I've seen no evidence that a 50 metre pool is actually required from a capacity point of view, nor is it supported in the evidence that's been provided to us in a very comprehensive report. There are other elements of the redevelopment which my own personal experience as well as the evidence in front of us tells
Point of order of relevance?
It's relevant in terms, I disagree, I actually think it's relevant. Her attending time on the, at the centre is relevant to the debate. She's giving a first hand experience.
Point of order is relevance to the debate. We're debating the option of including a 50 metre pool, not the councillor's evidence of not including it.
No, I disagree. Continue councillor Lawrence, councillor Rennie.
Thank you, ma'am Messina. I wonder if I might have 30 seconds because I've been
Yes, in actual fact, councillors, can we stop the clock? When we have more than two interjections in a point of order whilst the councillor was speaking, I'm going to reset the clock to the time equivalent of when the amount the councillor has to speak. So I'm going to put two minutes on the clock. Thank you. Continue councillor Rennie.
Thank you, councillor Messina. That's generous and I won't use that much time. But as I said, the report is really clear that the way in which community health and wellbeing can be improved in this area, and that was something the report considered at the very fine initiative of councillors Lawrence and Greco, the report is clear that a community hub model and a number of other facilities is actually the way to achieve the health and wellbeing outcomes that we're after. And as I said, 50 metre pools are not a standard offering across pools in Victoria. In fact, the majority of public pools do not contain a 50 metre pool. Even Thomas Town, that councillor Williams referred to earlier, does not have a 50 metre pool and it's a much loved facility that actually boasts on its website that it serves communities of Thomas Town, Mill Park, Epping, Reservoir and Faulkner among others. And, you know, I think that's worth considering. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor McCarthy.
Thanks, ma'am. I'm, I'll make my comment brief. I'm not prepared to support the amendment, having listened to the debate. What strikes me is that the original motion put forward by the officers, the original recommendation, really is based out of what the research to date has shown, but also sets us up to keep a number of options on the table. What the original motion is, is why I can't support the inclusion of the amendment, because the amendment locks us into a consideration. It does say option, but it certainly takes us down a path where it's all about size rather than about function or outcome and purpose. And when we talk about outcome and purpose, we just have to go to what the report shows in terms of the consultation, the surveys, and likewise, there were, I think, something like 86 different features that community members sought to have considered as part of this. We need to give consideration to the fact that there are a range of needs, both current and emerging, that need to be thought of. And the report that we would get back from, from offices in April next year will hopefully provide a greater level of insight, having now adopted a frame of community wellness and wellbeing, move to that next stage of what does that actually look like from a capital investment point of view and from an operational point of view. So, ma'am, I can't support the inclusion of this additional set of words. Were it to be something more general about consideration or options for different pools for different needs, that's fine, because that's just stating that we're talking about different needs. And I think the comments by, by a range of councillors, both in favour and against this amendment, have really firmed up my view that this is a project that is about change, it is about supporting a whole range of needs in the community. And the way that we do that is not by trying to prescribe design elements in the chamber, but by allowing our officers and the experts
Ten seconds.
To do that detailed work. I'm really interested to see what comes back to us, but we need to give them time to actually do that work, councillors.
Thank you.
Point of order, ma'am, sorry.
I'm just finished.
Yeah, I know, but councillor McCarthy said that this is
Sorry, according to the governance rule, you need to state
10.1H, misleading. Councillor McCarthy stated that this is the most up to date information. The OTM report was done in September 2019 and I believe that was in regards to a motion that was passed back then. So it's, I wouldn't say would be the most up to date information.
Thank you. I actually am not going to make any ruling on that. From my understanding is that you're reading that on the particular item, but I understand that is the most recent report that this council has. So I'm not going to rule on that, but basically note that that's the most recent report that this council has. We've heard from all councillors, from my understanding, yes we have, will now put this item number 8.7 to the vote. All those in favour of this amendment, that's councillor Williams, councillor Dimitriades, councillor Greco, councillor Lawrence, all those against, that's councillor Hannan, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina, councillor Newton and councillor, councillor, you've already voted. And councillor Rennie, that item has been lost.
I have an amendment.
Certainly.
That the words there with the option of a 50 metre pool be replaced with the words suggested by councillor Trent McCarthy that he would accept.
Accept.
They're on the record.
Can you please read what your amendment is, please?
I believe that what he said with options for a range of pools, you might, councillor Trent McCarthy might want to help me, an option of different sizes for community needs. And I think that was what you said.
I need, I need your scribing, councillor Lawrence. I can't ask councillor McCarthy describe your amendment. Could you please kindly scribe your amendment?
I'm describing, I think, something he wrote in handwriting and showed us over here and he's just said it there, so I don't want to prescribe it and misquote it.
You're, you're, okay, just one moment.
Let councillor McCarthy, let me take up his suggestion of peace and harmony.
So one moment councillor Lawrence, so what my understanding is you want to amend, can we please have the motion up, please? The amendment from councillor Greco, from my understanding is that councillor Lawrence would like
My amendment is to replace the words from councillor
Side, yeah, just one moment, if we can just
The words from councillor Trent McCarthy.
Yeah, just one moment councillor Lawrence. Can we please get councillor Greco's amendment there? I just need to confirm because we're scribing on the hop here. So item number two councillor Lawrence, my understanding is with the options of 50 metre pool, you want to replace that with?
Replace it with the proposed vision, including options for different sized pools to meet different community needs.
That's option number two. And were you also altering item number three in that as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, and I also have, for the sake of accuracy, another small change in regard to, what was number two?
Just one, let's do one thing at a time. I'll wait, I'll wait for
And I forwarded them to councillors and to the officers. And that was the words East Reservoir be replaced with East Reservoir and then a list of the catchment.
Okay, so what you're wanting to do is change the word to East Reservoir to describe the catchment and also alter two and three.
And I've emailed it to officers.
Just one moment councillors, we'll just wait for that. Let's take a moment.
Through you, ma'am Messina, just to clarify that second point about the catchment, can I, could councillor
Yeah, the, there's item number, just one moment. Item number two, state number two where it says East Reservoir Community. I think my understanding is that councillor Lawrence would like to include Kingsbury. Councillor Lawrence? Oh, he's bringing it to you, yeah. Now, we have entered into the debate and normally we don't allow any questions to officers. I'm going to ask and exercise the option to ask officers to please approach and ask councillors if they've got any questions to the officers in relation to this amendment in particular, whether you wish to ask questions relating to the catchment or the size of the pool. And if that's, we don't normally enter a debate, but I'm going to allow it because it is a bit of a change and I will allow the questions.
Can I make a suggestion that I move the councillor Trent McCarthy's words first?
Yeah, just what, yeah, yeah.
And then I'll do another amendment.
I'm preempt, I'm preempting to the councillors that I'm going to accept questions on this amendment due to the change, just because perhaps it's quite significant and I'm sure that there may be questions to the officers in relation to this change. Now, before we proceed, councillor Lawrence, is that your amendment?
I'd like to move the amendment with options of different sized pools responding to community needs inserted in both two and three as an amendment and then I'll come back to address the other
Do we have a second of a councillor Lawrence's amendment?
So that we separate those two issues.
Oh, so, sorry. Are we debating it separately, each item or are we, the whole, I just need to get some clarification, councillor Lawrence?
I'm just, I'm moving simply that the words of councillor Trent McCarthy are inserted into point two and three and I'll come back and move another motion around geographic suburbs.
You don't want to, you don't want to debate that?
I think that would be too confusing for people.
Ma'am, it's the second or I'm happy to accept the words relating to the different suburbs, so that could just deal with that one straight up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I don't know, it would be dependent on the mover, who may not be happy, but
The mover is councillor Newton.
Can we get it on the screen?
Yes, can we get that on? It's, it's, we're removing the words East Reservoir in item number two, that replaces it with Preston, MacLeod, Bundura and
That's not quite, it's a little bit more nuanced than that, it'll become
I was trying to recall it before it came up on the screen, but thank you.
So if we can deal with these parts
Yes, certainly.
As the second or an early the second, I can't speak for the mover, I have no objection to the incorporation of the words East Reservoir and the total catchment of Reservoir North, Western, Kingsbury, Bundura and MacLeod.
Yep.
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you, that's been accepted. So what we're doing now is, I'm seeking a second, for the options for different sized pools to respond to community needs in item number three and item number two. Is that, first of all, is that acceptable to the move in the second?
No.
No. Do we have a second? Councillor Williams, councillor Lawrence.
Excuse me, ma'am, were we going to be able to ask questions before we
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sorry. Over councillors, I did, I did say that I would do that and thank you for reminding me, councillor Hannan. Do we have any questions to the officers, please? Councillor Williams.
Were the community consulted or asked if they wanted a 50 metre pool? Directly, that, that question?
Through you, ma'am Messina. The community was asked about a range of needs that they would look at and they were asked to rate what they required, but the specific question about if they want a 50 metre pool wasn't asked, that's the question specifically.
You have a supplementary question? Yeah.
Actually, I'll, if somebody asks, because I'm going to try and think how to word this. Does anybody else have a question?
Yep, councillor Hannan.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a couple of questions, if I may. First question is, just to, just to follow for clarity, going back to the consultation, were, were residents asked for other specific, whether they would like other specific items such as a waterslide or such as some other non aquatic way to meet their health and wellbeing needs?
No, not specifically.
Okay, thank you. My, my second question relates to the, more specifically to the amendment. I, my question is, how would, would there be any challenges or how would the second dot point there practically be implemented, given that the, in, in the proposed recommendation there is only one option and, and the, the amendment proposes to talk about options? I'm wondering about would there be any challenges in actually implementing that? Thank you.
Through you, ma'am. The recommended option already includes a range of different pools to respond to different community needs. I'm unclear, having read this for the first time, if it's, it's asking for something different to what the recommended option includes. So I can, I can deliver on the recommended option which will include different sized pools to respond to community needs, because that's what is in the recommendation.
Thank you. Are there any further questions, councillors?
Yes. Looking at the feedback, it seems that a number of groups, including the Reservoir, Reservoir and Neighbourhood House, Reservoir Preston Swim Club and Reservoir Community Health have also asked for a 50 metre pool. So just, my query is that with this, how is it actually conducted? Were they written responses or was it somebody standing at the front of Reservoir and asking questions and just responding that way? Because it comes across to me that people were looking as fix ups for that, that pool as it stands, like they're saying, we want, we want cleaner toilets, we want a coffee machine, we want, I mean, yeah, sorry, which are things that are lacking there at this point in time at the Reservoir Leisure Centre. Where, I'm, I'm just concerned whether they were consulted in a way that if this was to be a blank canvas, what would you like to see here? Am I making sense?
Through you, ma'am Messina. So the consultation was done through various means. So there was a telephone survey with, I believe it was 300 residents, based on specific postcodes. There was also a user survey of just over 300 people, but there was specific, there was also specific workshops with specific user groups, including some of those groups that are on site.
Thank you. Are there any further questions, councillors? Councillor Greco.
Yeah, I have a question. I note in the report that some respondents, there were respondents that wanted a larger pool, you know, and a pool that would enable diving and also lifeguard programmes and things like that. Is there any indication, because I couldn't find in the report, when respondents said a larger pool, what did they mean by that?
Through you, ma'am Messina. Specifically in relation to a 50 metre pool, 6% of the respondents indicated that, 6%.
I have a second question, if I may. Um, in Malaysia, I'm just comparing this with the Northkot Aquatic Centre and the $63 million project that we have there. In the vision in relation to that, um, did the vision specifically state a 50 metre pool?
Um, through you, Mayor Messina, um, the process for, um, the Northkot, um, pu- uh, NARC was, was quite different to this, where with NARC we only undertook a feasibility study. While this is what the resolution in 2019 asked for, is a health and wellbeing study for Reservoir. So there, there's been additional pieces of work that were undertaken for Reservoir in terms of that, um, to inform where we are at at the moment.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? I do. Um, to the officers, um, I'd like to exercise my right to ask the question based if I'm going to vote on this. Um, what are the implications of this amendment, please, to the actual report? What does it mean timewise? What does it mean based on the findings? I'd like to, um, address those concerns, like, do we need more scoping? Or what, what's the answer to that, please?
Through you, mayor. The, the amendment referencing the suburbs, we don't think that that's consequential in a sense. It's, it's, we don't think that impacts on our capacity to meet the timeframe of April 2023. In relation to the, with different, with options for different sized pools to respond to community needs, I can only repeat what I've said before, that the recommendation from officers includes an expansion of the aquatic functions, which is a, a range of different sized water bodies for different needs. I believe if that's what the council's intent is, uh, we can deliver some design work for council's consideration by April 2023.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any further questions? Councillor Dimitriades.
Uh, thank you, just a quick question. In terms of the report having already options of different sized pools, um, I didn't note anything in the office, in the officer's report about a 50 metre pool. I know that when we had a briefing, it was, it was in the report, but not in the public release of the report.
So again, the recommendations that provided to council are based on the findings of the health and wellbeing study. Now, in terms of the 50 metre pool, as I have mentioned earlier, um, it hasn't been an indication in terms of the needs of the health and being studied specifically.
Councillor Dimitriades.
Thank you. So just to clarify, the options of different sized pools hasn't been fully investigated then? If we haven't considered the 50 metre pool in the report?
Um, you're preempting, you're preempting the question, ask a different question.
What, can, can someone clarify that, please?
Through you, Mayor Messina, so the health and wellbeing study, uh, looked at, um, well, options following the feasibility study, it looked at, it did specifically look at the pools that have been recommended, but it does talk about, the health and wellbeing study does talk specifically about their recommendation not to proceed with a 50 metre pool.
Councillors, are there any further questions? Councillor Williams.
Yes, thank you. Due to the catchment of having particularly a lot of, uh, Muslim women that we were having a Friday evening, I think only for women only, are we considering still doing that? And have we thought about if we are to redevelop or change Reservoir? Will there be a area for just women only?
Uh, through you, Mayor Messina, uh, I don't believe that program has returned post-COVID at this point, but it's something that obviously the RLC staff can look into. Um, any potential design, uh, design work would look at options to obviously have, um, culturally sensitive programming.
Thank you. Um, I think I'll accept this as the last question.
Um, yes, this is just a question through you, Mayor Messina, um, because I've had some trouble with this hub. Could I get a copy of the actual blank survey sent out?
We'll take that on notice.
Yeah.
Thank you. So we have councillor Lawrence's, thank you, officers, thank you for that impromptu, um, request to come and address some of the questions. So we have a amendment moved by councillor Lawrence, seconded by councillor, um, Williams. Do we have any further speakers? Councillor McCarthy.
Thanks, mayor. Um, thank you, um, councillor Lawrence for picking up my set of words, and I'm really pleased to speak to the amendment, um, to provide, I think, some clarity, although I think Mr Hewitt has already done so, um, in his response and wisely so. As councillors would see on page 57, um, of the excellent report that we have in front of us, um, it is clear that the proposal is, um, to provide different pools for different needs and to really move beyond, um, the status quo, which, um, does not, and I think it's clear from the report and I think it's clear from the statements this evening, um, does not respond to the current and emerging needs. So as councillors would see on page 57.
No water, sorry, mayor. Um, councillor McCarthy's 10.1H misleading said doesn't respond to the current needs. Uh, we're back, this, this particular report is from September 2019, so it's not the current.
I, I disagree. This is a current that we have currently. Please continue, councillor McCarthy.
Thanks, mayor. I'm just, I'm actually responding to appendix D for councillors who might not be aware of which report I'm referring to. Um, and of course, in appendix D on page 57, it does talk to us about, um, both the existing hydrotherapy pool, of course, the new hydrotherapy pool, which we know there is a, a strong need for hydrotherapy. Um, of course, we've already talked about the revitalized outdoor water area, I wouldn't refer to that specifically as a pool. The extended learn to swim pool, which for me is one of the most interesting elements to this. It's that focus on learning to swim, and I, I took my own kids for swimming lessons to RLC. And I have to say, it was a challenge, and this is a few years ago, but it was a challenge when we were doing our swimming lessons, um, to have that focus when you actually had a lot of competing activity in the existing main pool. Um, and of course, uh, the, the range of other elements, including, of course, um, the other elements around fitness and wellness which aren't specifically pools. So we're talking about both expanding and new pools that meet different needs. This is a very different conversation to, um, concentrating on the size of a pool and actually talking about the fact that what is wonderful about this whole plan that the officers have put forward to us is that it is highly responsive, um, even at this conceptual stage to those emerging needs. And I really support the recommendation and are happy to support the amendment.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I'm going to speak against the amendment because I think it just kicks a problem down the road. It's clear to me that some councillors think that this amendment keeps alive the 50 metre pool and means that something will come back to us that suddenly has options for a 50 metre pool. Other councillors don't, uh, interpret it in that way, and I think this is inherently problematic. That the amendment is vague, it means different things to different people, and that is a recipe for future disaster and conflict. I think we need to be clear, we have just had an amendment which has been debated and put to the vote and lost in relation to the issue of 50 metre pool. I think that should put the issue to bed. The officers have clearly said that, you know, they can achieve this because they're already doing it. If they're already doing it, and if the motion as it was prior to this amendment already results in it being done, then what purpose does the amendment serve other than to keep alive this debate which has been done and dusted multiple times? I'm looking at the very excellent sort of sketch-up artist's impression type drawing on page seven of the report, of, of page, that's page seven of 57, which shows multiple pools, all of different shapes and sizes, and all which will meet different needs. This is already included. So there is a main pool, an extended learn to swim pool, a program pool, a new hydrotherapy pool, the existing hydrotherapy pool. Then there was the spa, there was a revitalized outdoor area, and that's as part of RLC. And then there is the splash pad in the adjacent park, which will be free to use.
10 seconds.
I urge people to vote against this amendment because I think it creates unnecessary ambiguity and future problems, and that is unhelpful.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Greco.
Thank you, Mayor Messina, and, um, look, I, I support the, um, this amendment, and, and I think it goes some way to try and address the issue of, um, what actually are the needs of, of this particular area. I can't stress, um, the importance of, we're dealing with an area that is disadvantaged. Councillors, I'll be quite blunt, um, it's one rule for the richer end of our city with a $63 million pool, which includes a 50 metre pool. That's where I live. And I was fortunate enough to grow up in a working class suburb where there was a 50 metre pool. Now in Reservoir, where it's a identified disadvantaged a- area, we're shortchanging what is happening there. The biggest suburb, and one of the biggest suburbs in metropolitan Melbourne, and we're shortchanging us, um, looking at options on how we can better serve that community. It actually requires even more attention, I would say, than where I live in Northkot. And, um, and what this means, and I've said this before, I have a grandson that lives in Reservoir. My grandson, un- unlike me, will not be able to go and swim in a 50 metre pool. He will have to go from Reservoir into another suburb in order to do that and not have the same advantage that I was fortunate enough in a working class suburb to grow up with a 50 metre pool. So councillors, I just ask, councillors, let, let's not have one rule for the rich end of our town and one other rule for the, um, more disadvantaged end of our town.
Point of order, Mayor Messina, under 10.11E, that is offensive. Yeah, I think you should retract that statement. I find that offensive also, councillor. Please retract that statement.
I'll retract that statement, and what I'll say is that we need to have more attention to the more, to the disadvantaged areas in our city. And councillors, we should not be restrictive, we should be expansive towards the more poorer ends of our city and ensuring that their capital, the capital infrastructure of that, those, that end of the city, um, is properly addressed.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers? For councillor Lawrence, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Rennie and councillor Greco, are there any further speakers?
I haven't spoken.
No, I know you have, uh, you, you've got a right reply. Sorry, you've got, you reserved your right. Sorry, you reserved your right from my understanding. Did you not second councillor Lawrence's?
I have, but I haven't reserved my right.
Well, then how did you speak to it?
I haven't spoken to it.
Okay, councillor Williams? Would you like to speak to it?
I think I've lost my train of thought. Um.
Sorry.
I think it's important that, follow on from councillor Greco, that we are looking at an area that has very little. And looking at the report, the report actually highlights a ice skating rink, which is a place that people can come together, an ice skating rink. But yet, it hasn't really highlighted about the Reservoir Leisure Centre, a place that people feel connected as part of the community. And that's why the report has actually highlighted that it's important, that it needs to be converted from a swimming pool to an actual hub, so those in the area can have the catchment that have not been picked up and have a place of belonging and not an acknowledgement, but a place of, um, uh, of, of success, of something new that they can come to and enjoy. Where I find, looking at it at the moment, it is a rundown, yes. It may not be falling down at this point in time, it may not be in the same situation as the way NARC was. However, it is not the most happiest place for a lot of people, including my child, who has autism and struggles to be there because of the echoing of the noise in the roof, and struggles to do swimming because there's swimming people at one end and she can't swim to the other end because there's other, other swim groups on the other end of that swimming pool, even though it's only 25 metres. I, I think it's important that we continually to, um, not have this area disadvantaged. We actually need to enhance that area. As my fellow councillors mentioned, Reservoir is equivalent to like three areas together. So we're talking a huge population, we're talking a huge growth, and we're talking about people's future wellbeing.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Are there any further speakers? As there are no further speakers, I put this amendment to the vote. All those in favour? That's councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Dimitriades, councillor Messina, councillor Lawrence, councillor Greco. All those against? Councillor Hannan, councillor Rennie and councillor Newton. That, that becomes your carried item, councillors. Um, this becomes a substantive motion. Does, we've heard from councillor Newton, councillor Rennie reserved her right, and councillor Williams. Are there any further speakers? Councillor McCarthy.
Um, thanks, mayor. Look, I, I'll just, um, clarify, I made a statement, um, just first of all, uh, when speaking to the amendment before, um, I think I referred to page 57, I should have referred to page seven of the, um, of the report that included 57. So if councillors aren't clear, um, and look, I'm, I'm happy to support this. I want to just also, um, I suppose pick up a point that councillor Rennie, um, made before, which is that whilst I was happy to support the amendment just because it makes it really clear what the report does, the report does not take us down the path, um, of specifying pool sizes. What it does actually is that it gives us a very specific diagram and a specific proposal here, which I just draw councillors' attention back to, which is actually the fantastic diagram on page seven of 57 of appendix D, um, which talks about how this facility through the, um, health and wellbeing and that social health and wellbeing model, um, actually will deliver on that range of community needs that have been identified in the range of, um, reports and studies that we have here. And I want to emphasise that, that we're not at the stage right now of saying, are we going to have a pool of this size or that size? That's in there, that is in page, um, seven of 57, um, which is looking at the hub model. And I think one thing that's been lost in this debate is actually a focus on what we are seeking to do here, which is not talk just about, um, RLC as a facility, but to talk about, um, a much bigger vision about transformation, about health and wellbeing outcomes. I want to take councillors back to the genesis of this, and I think it was councillor Lawrence or councillor Greco, I can't remember who moved the motion because there were two motions on the night, a couple of years ago, who called for this, um, exact report to look at how our redevelopment of RLC could support, um, improved health and wellbeing outcomes for our community.
10 seconds.
I think it's really important for us to keep a focus on that's what this is about, that's what the hub model does. That's why this report is so important, and I look forward to seeing what comes back to us, um, in April next year.
It's time. Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Greco, we've, uh, uh, yeah, councillor Newton, we're back to you, this becomes the motion. So we're councillor Newton, um, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, and councillor Rennie has reserved her right. So now over to councillor Greco.
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I have a, 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 I have a motion, uh, sorry, an amendment that I'd like to, um, include as part of this substantive motion. I've handed the, the words over to our officers, and hopefully they can put them up for all of us to see.
So we can, can we stop the clock, please? We don't need a clock. Thank you. We'll wait for that to come up on the screen. What is? I'm trying to find what the amendment is.
It's point number five, and, and I'm open to officers', um, advice in relation to the dates that I have put there.
You're wanting some advice, councillor?
I, I'm open to advice from our officers if those dates are, are practical and, 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 and workable in, in relation to achieving the outcome of some further consultation.
Can we have the officers, um, Mr Hewitt, um, Sam, Drew, Charlie?
Through you, Mayor Messina, um, in considering any future options, um, at, at the start, would Through you, Mayor Messina. In considering any future options at the start, would be doing specific consultation, can I just have that back on again?
It was June, July, I think, the dates.
It won't be...
May, June.
Yeah, it won't be possible for us to undertake that at this moment in time.
Thank you.
Can I get some advice then on what time you would need to undertake that consultation? That's why I'm seeking the advice from officers.
Please, councillor Lawrence.
Through you, Mayor Messina. In terms of obviously, first of all, developing the consultation, that would take a bit of time. So I don't believe, in terms of potential timelines, I don't think we'll be able to get back, or, you know, once we've obviously organised the consultation through our community engagement process, I would suggest the earliest would be able to get back would be potentially October. That's a potential date, as obviously a question on notice.
Thank you.
I'm happy then to include that indicative date.
So we're removing item number five with October, replacing July 2022 with October. Is that correct, councillor? Thank you. Is that acceptable to councillor Lawrence? Well, it goes back to councillor Lawrence now, from my understanding, because it becomes... Oh, councillor, councillor, sorry.
No.
Councillor Greco, do we have a second of councillor Greco's motion, taken by councillor Lawrence? Councillor Greco, would you like to speak to your amendment of councillor Lawrence's?
Thank you, Member Messina. Look, the obvious point here that is missing is that we haven't really talked to the community about actually what they want. We have a report that's looked at the health and wellbeing, and it's quite an extensive report, but in actually consulting widely with the community about the types of sizes of pools that they want, that has not been done. It was actually even suggested, it actually even stated to us by our officers when, that no consultation was done specifically on a 50-metre pool. So I think that, look, we're here for the community. Let's carry out a consultation with the community, not only the experts, but with the community, and let them give us feedback and inform us, in order that that can then inform the vision that we want to move forward with. As councillor McCarthy said, the approach that has been taken is not fully set. So therefore, I think it's quite opportune and timely to consult with the community on the specific points, so that we can then feed that into the future vision that we give to the redevelopment of the Reservoir Leisure Centre. Why I say that, councillors, and because I have to really hold back my anger, you know, in relation to this. Because why I say that, councillors, we are making a decision here, councillors, about a vision that is going to lock us up for the next 20 to 30 years. It's an important decision. My grandson, who's four, will be 34 by the time, and will live through that process. So it's important, councillors, that we ensure that we get all the input that we can possibly get. We're not buying the community a pair of shoes that they can discard the next day. We're actually investing in something that the community will have for the next 30 to, up to 30 to years or more. So we have to be as extensive as possible in our consultation with the community. We have to hear the community. That is something that we have been criticised for. And here is an opportunity, councillors, let's hear the community, let's make the community the judges on what they would like actually to see in terms of the redevelopment of the Reservoir Leisure Centre. We did that with the, we did that with NARC, where the community had fabulous input. And all of us councillors, we voted for that. I voted for the $63 million redevelopment in NARC.
Civic Centre.
And what I'm finding here is that councillors, particularly from the southern areas, are not willing to give the north a break.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, Mayor Messina. Look, I have a strong, you know, support for swimming, and obviously the aided other facilities of saunas and things, because that was vital for my cancer treatment in the last three or four years, and going there to Reservoir. It was depressing to see all the gaffer tape on the tiles. It was depressing to see that it could actually be double in terms of therapeutic facilities. It was also depressing one day when the whole men's toilets fell over because the chipboard was so damp and rotten. And I had to stand there for two hours before an officer came to make it safe, because I've worked on building sites. You don't leave them that dangerous. So the conditions there are appalling, as appalling as Northcote was. I'm not got a fixed view. Well, I have got a view that 65,000 people in this catchment might deserve the same pool Northcote had in the 1980s. That's my gut feel. But, and also standing as sardines in summer in the 25-metre pool. But as a councillor, I have to go through process. 300 people in a survey is a disgrace for a $38 million project. 300 people on a survey, where I haven't even analysed it with my university training research, which I will do soon, of whether there was bias in that survey. That's a disgrace. We haven't consulted the community, and we haven't looked at the demographic future needs of families in that area. I'll be very happy one day, it's been five years, it's been two CEOs, maybe it's going to be three, when honest options get put on the table.
That's time, councillor Lawrence, thank you. Councillor Williams and then councillor Hannan.
Sort of gives you the perspective of qualitative versus quantitative research. I'm just going to read out what I found in the feasibility study from La Trobe University, which was very extensive. As I said, I spent a number of hours, and I've got pages that I've downloaded and looked into, and there was only so much I could talk about. But I will mention this part where it says, "Effective community engagement requires meaningful, including representative partnerships. Additional groups could include health services, should be a priority for ensuring that the Reservoir Leisure Centre meets community needs long term." It says, "It was happy that examined and engaged with the Reservoir Salvation Army, Reservoir Neighbourhood House, and the Somali and Pace and this legal service." But it said that it needed to examine groups that had not yet been engaged, and it gave examples of swim schools, dervs, Your Community Health East Reservoir, and mental health services, cultural groups, scouts, Darabhan Ethnic Community Council, art organisations, early childhood services, play groups, childcare, additional educational institutions." These are not words that have come out of my mouth. These are words that have actually come out of this feasibility and what it has asked and requested to look into further.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Are there any further, councillor Hannan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I'm unable to support this proposed amendment. I just want to say that some of the statements that have been made about the consultation to date have been, in my view, insulting. I go back to my statement before, other councillors' statement before, this is a fine piece of work, an extensive piece of work, an expert evidence-based piece of work. It delivers on the task that was given. The task that was given was to say, what is the best way to improve health and wellbeing outcomes for people, particularly in the northern part of Darabhan? This is what this report does. To insinuate that the report is somehow dishonest or insufficient is unfair to the hard work and expert advice that's been provided. We have seen this before in this council chamber, where there's a disagreement with a finding of consultation, the conclusion that, well, the consultation must be wrong, send it out again. I don't agree with that. I remind councillors that 6% of people, when asked, "What do you prioritise for the centre", prioritised a 50-metre pool. Do you think...
Point of order, a misleading statement. It was 6% of the 300 who responded.
It's just mathematics, but I think the point is, it's just mathematics. Continue, councillor Hannan. Councillor, councillor, continue.
I also object to the characterisation that there are certain councillors that are not interested in improving health and wellbeing. I myself am passionately committed to improving health, wellbeing and addressing disadvantage. I believe we all are. I'm also committed to my role as a councillor. I'm basing decisions on evidence, advice and financial responsibilities of councillors. And that's why I did not support a new round of consultation, in addition to what's already been done.
Thank you, councillor Hannan. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you. One of the greatest concerns I have with this amendment is that it actually delays much-needed progress and much-wanted progress on this initiative. So if councillors look at the proposed timelines for this work to occur, and they can be found on page 56 of 57 in the latest report, what they'll see is that it's anticipated that design, preliminary design of some of these components will commence in the new financial year. Now, that won't happen if we send this back for another round of consultation. And that has already happened. This project and certainty for the community going forward, and much-wanted and needed improvements have already been delayed by asking for more reports and consultation. I want us to get on with it, because I think in the context of the urban heat...
Point of order.
Based on what item, please, councillor Lawrence?
Point of order, this has been delayed.
Councillor Lawrence, you need to state what item, for valid point of orders.
10.1H, 10.18, whatever. This item's been deliberately delayed for three years by blocking motions, which I have an apology letter from councillor Rennie on.
Councillor, we're not entering into the debate. I disagree with your statement. Continue, councillor Rennie.
I'll furnish an apology letter for you.
Councillor, councillor, councillor? Councillor, I'm going to put two minutes on the clock. Please reset the clock. Councillor Rennie, you have two minutes, should you wish to take that.
Thank you, Mayor Messina. So I'm really keen for us to get on with it. I'm particularly keen for us not to hold up the design of the outdoor publicly available and free splashpad area. This is something that's happening in an increasing number of municipalities. And I think from an accessibility point of view, creating an outdoor water play area that is not part of a paid facility, but which is available in the heart of a community that experiences stress and socio-economic disadvantage, is a major breakthrough and a huge asset to that community. And I think on days when there is extreme heat, we will see that as an oasis for people living in this area. And so I want to get on and progress that as soon as possible. You can see from the timeline that that is the component of this development that will get off the ground fastest and will be delivered fastest. And so I don't want further delays. By going back and fishing for more information, as councillor Hannan said, it is not helpful if you don't get the result you want from a first round of consultation, to keep going back and asking questions.
Point of order, this is actually bordering on insulting.
Please state which item.
Item 10.1H, it's insulting councillors who've asked for adequate consultation.
I don't agree, councillor Lawrence.
And characterising them of not getting their way.
Councillor Lawrence, I don't agree. I don't agree. It is subjective. Please take your seat. Continue, councillor.
I'm not your professional.
Please take your seat, councillor Lawrence.
This is, we've debated for a long time. I'll finish there. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? councillor Demetriadis?
Thank you.
Councillor Lawrence, do you have something to say?
I just wanted to say...
One moment. Please do not...
300 people is a difference.
Please do not interject during, in the chambers whilst you do not have the permission to speak. Now councillor Demetriadis, I will set your clock at two minutes. Please start. Thank you, councillor Demetriadis.
Thank you. So just quickly, I wanted to raise a few issues. Firstly, about the consultation. If we're asking people to prioritise what they want in a facility, obviously clean facilities, good bathrooms would prioritise over a 50-metre pool. It's just common sense. So when councillor Hannan responds with 6% prioritises a 50-metre pool, it's actually a little misleading, because most people would want clean facilities. They don't want bricks falling off the wall. It's common sense. Then about the delay. So this, the 50-metre pool, I believe, became an issue over three years ago when there was a NOM. I wasn't on this council. The results of that NOM came to us only recently, which is why we are still going on about this since 2019, which is why the report was done in 2019. So the fact that, so the delay...
It's 10.1.8. The most recent report was completed in January 2022.
Thank you. Can you just rephrase that?
So I'll clarify that. The most recent report was done in...
Just one moment. Can we watch the tone and the pitch? Continue.
Thank you. The most recent report was done in January 2022, but in that report was, it actually stated the 50-metre pool. I saw it, everybody else saw it. It came to a briefing. It had a whole big paragraph about the 50-metre pool, yet now it's not even in this particular report. So it's frustrating that we can't just come to an agreement. I'm sorry, it is, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Demetriadis. Are there any further speakers?
Mayor, could I just refer councillor Demetriadis to page 52 of the 2022 report, which has a paragraph about the 50-metre pool?
Perhaps you can save that for the debate. Thank you. Councillor Lawrence, I believe you've spoken. Do we have any...
I'm just trying to clarify, have we actually got to the substantive motion yet?
We're voting on the amendment from councillor Greco, which you agreed to. Are there any further speakers? And I think we've had enough on the debate. This is, councillor Lawrence, you've already spoken. Do we have any further speakers? We'll put this, what we're doing is voting on the amendment for 8.7, which includes councillor Greco's item, which is item number five, which is now up for the vote. All those in favour of this amendment? Councillor Williams, councillor Demetriadis, councillor Greco, councillor Lawrence, all those against? That's councillor Hannan, councillor Greco, sorry, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina, councillor Newton and councillor Rennie. That item has been not carried. Can we go back to the motion which was supported, which was moved by councillor Lawrence, seconded? No, no, it was actually councillor, it became yours, but councillor Lawrence had the amendment. It was supported. Yes. Yeah, but we had amendments from councillor Lawrence that was accepted. Yep, okay, yep. So that becomes, that's what I was wanting to go back to that on the screen. So can we have that on the screen? That's correct. So we've heard from councillor Newton, councillor Rennie, who has reserved her right, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy and councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers?
Hang on, we only spoke on the amendment. We haven't spoken about...
We haven't spoken. I haven't spoken.
Voted that. No, we...
Mayor, for the sake of clarity, I wonder if we could now take down amendment councillor Lawrence?
That's what's, yeah, get rid of that. What have you heard? Just one moment. Councillor, just one moment. Councillor Williams, when you moved your amendment for the five-star rating, green star rating, which is item number four, did you speak to that? Because I've noted down that you did.
Sorry, which one was it?
Item number four, which was in addition to the motion that was moved by, that was accepted by councillor Newton and councillor Rennie. Did you speak to that?
I don't recall.
I thought you did as well. Thank you. So I was right. So we've heard from councillor Newton, councillor Rennie reserved to write, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy. Councillor Greco, did you speak to this?
No, I haven't spoken.
Would you like to? I'm asking, we've heard, as I said, councillor Newton, councillor Rennie, reserved her right, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy. Now, who else would you like to speak to this? Councillor Greco?
Mayor Messina, in relation to this motion, I, I can't, I don't have the words to express my disappointment with this motion. This motion and this issue has split this council for the last three years. And there's been no movement whatsoever, whatsoever from certain councillors on this council in relation to this. We've tried to come, I've tried to come a long way in relation, in relation to this particular issue because I think it's a really important issue councillors. Now, when it's mentioned that, you know, we'll delay it, you know? Look, if we have to delay it for three months or six months over a 30 year project, so be it councillors, it's a 30 year project. We're not buying a pair of shoes for the community. So I'm asking, I'm actually pleading to councillors to shift from their position to, not to be locked into something that they've been locked into for the last three years and locked in as a block, I would say, in relation to this particular item. So councillors, let's show some unity here. Let's show some compromise here councillors. I tried to put some issues of compromise. I tried to say, let's look at the option of a 50 metre pool. I tried to say, let's talk to the community, see what they say to us and let them be the judge and, and I'll be bound by that. No, 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 is the constant response that we get. It makes me angry councillors, I have to really hold back my anger about this because I know what it means to grow up in an area where there is infrastructure capital deficit. I know what that means councillors and many of you also know what that means. Here is an opportunity to make a difference to an area that has a Sifa index indicator, which is way below what we should tolerate.
Thank you councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Williams, you already spoke, so.
No, no, I spoke when I made my amendment.
Okay.
Not on the substantive motion.
I understood she did. But I thought she spoke.
I asked that question before and the reply was yes, she did. Please continue councillor Williams.
Mayor, point of order, it's contrary, I'll just get you the reference.
I was right, thank you. That's okay.
Mayor, it's contrary to the meeting rules, which is 10.11. When councillor Williams spoke, that was to the motion, there was no need for councillor Williams to speak to the amendment because the amendment was accepted by the mover and seconder. And so councillor Williams is too.
That's why I had noted her down, but she advised that she hadn't. You can appreciate changes and amendments, five or six pages longs between people speaking and sometimes it's often difficult to keep track of. So I've got councillor Newton, councillor Rennie has reserved her right, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy and councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Lawrence?
Thanks, Mayor Messina, yes. So I go back to the issue. Is this council really locking in a vision of $60 million and a $38 million pool? Which I remind councillors issued a gagging motion on in 2019, 2020, when I even wanted to suggest a 36 million pool at Reservoir. Since then, I've looked more carefully into it and the number of people we're talking about, which is 44,000 people in Reservoir and the adjoining areas, another 24,000 people. So my maths was wrong, it's actually 68,000 people in this catchment and we do not have the decency to speak to them like human beings. A 30, a 300 word survey, I can get organised in seven days. You know, it's pathetic, this is about intergenerational asset renewal.
Point of order. Please, no need, can you please retract that last statement?
It is, it is unprofessional, it is unethical to not talk to a whole concert of nearly 70,000 people about a major investment like this. Can I make it any plainer?
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillors, any further speakers? Councillor Rennie, would you like your?
Reserved, thank you Mayor Messina. Firstly, I'd like to thank the many staff in council who have been involved in the preparation of this report. I think it's a superb piece of work that took the motion that was passed by this council over two years ago now very seriously, which was a motion to explore how the Reservoir Leisure Centre might become a health and wellbeing hub that could be instrumental in improving the health and wellbeing outcomes of residents in this area. And I think that theme of health and wellbeing permeates every element of this report in quite an extraordinary way that I haven't necessarily seen in every piece of work. And so I very much commend those staff who were involved and thank them for their work. Many comments have been made tonight that I find concerning and offensive, particularly comments in relation to the current state of the Reservoir Leisure Centre. And I can only hope that staff who work at that centre and who invest a huge amount of energy in making a visit to that centre to be a really pleasant experience. I can only hope they weren't actually listening tonight. I swim at the centre three times a week, I'm a member and it's actually a really lovely pool. So for anyone who hasn't taken the opportunity to swim there recently, we did identify a few years ago that there were some issues with cleaning and maintenance and council acted over the last few years to really improve both of those elements. And anyone who visits the pool now will see that it is a really fine facility and it's actually much loved by people who visit it. But as I said earlier, I notice when I go there that most used areas are the hydrotherapy pool. It's, it's known as one of the best hydrotherapy pools in the north of Melbourne. It's, it's well loved and we know that there is more use for that. That has come out as being something that will really add value to the health and wellbeing of the community. Similarly, we know there's a known demand for swimming lessons. And so I look forward to this and I'm so keen to see it get underway.
Thank you. Councillors, now put that, this item to the vote. All those in favour? That's been carried unanimously, thank you. Councillors, I'm going to suggest a 15 minute break. Please come back at nine, 9.40. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, welcome back. The next item we have on the agenda and report we have to consider is item number 8.8, Investment and Treasury Policy. We have the officers in the room. Are there any questions to the officers? No questions? Councillors, do I have a motion? councillor McCarthy?
Happy to move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you, officers. And councillor Greco, I saw your hand also. Did you want to second that motion?
Yes.
Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep this brief. Councillors would have read the report and would be aware of this particular policy, which of course is an update at the time. The last time council actually considered this was relatively recently, which was the 31st of March, sorry, 31st of January, I should say. And so this has come back to us following a request to look at the fossil fuel component, which has been referred on through in relation to the Audit and Risk Committee. Councillors, I support the recommendation by the officers. I also thank them for joining us here this evening. Apologies, it's late in the evening and I appreciate them being on hand if there were any questions. But apart from that, I'm happy to support what we have in front of us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. Yeah, look, I'm happy to second this. Just to give some further background, this report's come back to us as a result of a motion that was endorsed a few months ago, a motion asking officers to do some more work in order to strengthen the wording in relation to nuclear weapons investment policy. What the policy actually does is that it aligns nuclear weapons investments with fossil fuel investments. So there's a complete alignment of the two, so that our investment and treasury policy, now that when you read it, it's much more comprehensive and also the language is a little bit tighter. And basically, the way that we treat investments in regards to fossil fuels will be using the same approach, the same methodology in assessing investments that are related to nuclear arms. Also, I think what's worthy to point out is that the Audit Committee has looked at these changes and the Audit Committee has worked closely with our officers and also with our previous motion and assisted with some of the wording in order to make it as solid as possible and also to ensure that the investment and treasury policy meets all the required legislative requirements in regards to how council can invest its money. It's an important area for council to ensure that its money is secured, but at the same time, we need to ensure that whatever investments that we do make are done on an ethical basis. So I commend the motion.
Thank you councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers? Councillors, as there are no further speakers, I'll now put that to the vote. All those in favour? That's been carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. Councillors, the next report we have to consider this evening is item number 8.9. And we do have conflict of interest. Councillor Hannon, it's the advocacy report, Darabhan Advocacy Strategy 2022-2026. You declared you had a conflict.
Sorry, I thought we were doing the governance.
This is 8.9.
8.9.
Did I jump something? Governance report, I did.
Thanks for the reminder.
Apologies. It's because I've numbered my running sheet the wrong way. So we're up to 8.9 Governance Report, yeah, April 2022. Apologies, I've done my running sheet the wrong way. But I'd like to direct now microphone to Mr Mann.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of minor errors in the governance report that I wanted to draw to council's attention before you consider this item. They relate to the summary of advisory committee and briefing reports. These were the councillor briefing on the 11th of April on page 365, councillor Newton should be recording as an apology. The report of the Darabhan Aboriginal Advisory Committee on page 377, there was an error in that it records councillor Rennie twice. One of those should be councillor Newton. And thirdly, the Sexuality, Sex and Gender Advisory, Diversity Advisory Committee, councillor Rennie is not listed as a proxy and she should be. So with those minor corrections, I present the report.
Thank you, Mr Mann. Are there any questions given that? Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Rennie and councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. This is a report that comes to us at each council meeting and whilst some of the items are standard and we've grown to expect them, there's always a couple that are different and that are specific to the month in question. And I'd like to draw your attention to those for this month. Importantly, there are eight points that we're effectively voting on tonight. And the one that I'd firstly like to draw people's attention to is to note the advice from the Minister for Local Government regarding the appointment of a municipal monitor. And I'm delighted that we have the municipal monitor here with us tonight. Mr John Watson has joined us for his first meeting and I welcome him and I know that we are all looking forward to working with him over the next eight or nine months. The other points of interest and importance for this month's governance report relate particularly to the Regulatory Legislation Amendment Reform Act 2022, which from the 2nd of September introduces the ability for councils to be permanently enabled to conduct meetings by electronic means. It won't be as simple as that for Darabhan. Each council will have to define how and when they do that and I know we'll have further discussion. But I do think that that is a sign of changing times and, you know, know that particularly for some rural and regional councils, I think that will be very welcome. I know that as a group of colleagues, we very much enjoy actually being here in this hall and I know that our community really likes attending meetings in person. But it's worth knowing that that state legislative framework has changed in that way. Importantly, I'd also like to draw your attention to the fact that this endorses the extension of the COVID financial hardship policy. This is a policy we put in place at the beginning of the pandemic, which enabled people with no penalty to defer payment of their rates. That was to come to an end on the 30th of June. Our council staff have looked at the data and looked at the needs in our community and determined that that would be perhaps too rapid to cut this form of support off and are proposing an extension for a further three months to assist people with the transition back to paying their rates. And that impacts at this stage on about 4% of our ratepayers. I commend this report to you as my colleagues and also to members of the community who want to fully consider these aspects of council governance. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll keep it brief. Councillor Rennie's covered it really well. I'd also just also like to welcome Mr Watson here as our municipal monitor and look forward, I'm sure as all councillors do, working with him over coming months. I'd also just like to, in addition to councillor Rennie's commentary in relation to the extension of the COVID hardship, financial hardship policy, just note that that proposed percentage figure, which is an expectation of 4% of ratepayers, works out in fact to be about 2,500 ratepayers, which on the one hand is a small percentage of our total base, but is actually a significant number. And it does have an impact, obviously financially on council in terms of the direct financial flow on effect to our deferral of interest payments to council, which works out to be about $250,000. So it's, I think, an important measure, one that I certainly support. But it's one, just like anything, where we seek to drive and deliver equity in this city, where there is other impacts on other parts of the organisation. So I just want to thank our officers for their initiative in bringing this proposal to us and of course also to thank the organisation for taking such proactive steps with the original policy, which is now two years old, Mayor. And I think it's worth noting, it's quite unique in local government. As far as I know, no council has extended their COVID hardship policy in this way and with that depth. So I just want to recognise that work as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Put item number 8.9 to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, councillors. That's been carried unanimously. The next item we have for consideration is item 8.10, which is the Darabhan Advocacy Strategy 2022-2026. Before we commence, councillor Hannon?
Mayor, thank you. As stated at the start of the meeting, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest in specifically one area, the area of environment, climate change and renewable energy due to my employment at the Department of Environment, Water and Planning. And I request that that one theme be considered separately to allow me to remove myself for the rest, for that item and return for the rest of the debate.
Thank you. I'm happy to proceed on that basis and we'll deal with that item first. Thank you councillor Hannon. We will call you back in at the onset. Have an amended.
Can you just confirm what we're doing?
Yeah, just one moment. Councillor Hannon's leaving premises on the chamber. Then we'll ask for that motion on the screen, councillors. So we've separated item number, that particular item, to address the conflict. Do we have any questions to the officers? councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. Just a small question. There's a lot of good work here and there's a lot of policies and advocacy issues there. I was just wondering, will this material, if it's passed tonight, would it be produced in a format that will be easily accessible for the community and also for officers and councillors that we can make quick reference to?
Thank you for your question councillor. Through you, Mayor Messina, the report as it is will be presented, but thank you for your feedback. And yes, we will look to have an easy read version for staff and councillors and community.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions? councillor Greco, I'm sorry, councillor McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to clarify, in relation to existing council advocacy positions, of which there is, there are many and there is a great amount of depth, I just want to have it confirmed that those positions remain as part of the body of advocacy work, but these are the priorities for which council will focus on.
That's correct.
Coming period. If we can just have that confirmed, because I think that's where there's a little bit of uncertainty.
Yep. Just one moment while I'll hand over to Ms Olivia.
Through you, Mayor. I think the clarification I would offer is where you've got an existing policy where it's essentially more detailed, that would be the case. These ones don't override them. If anything in the strategy is essentially in conflict with the previous one, the decision tonight would be the new position. On the whole, the strategy reflects your current positions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Councillors, do I have a motion?
Councillor McCarthy? Sorry, Mayor, I have an amendment. So I'm happy to move the substantive motion but include the amendment unless.
Is it in relation to environment, climate change and renewable energy?
Oh, sorry. I'll move, I'll move the environment, climate change and renewable energy motion there. Sorry.
Thank you. So you're moving that, the officer's recommendation that deals with that particular?
That's correct.
Do we have a second? councillor Rennie? councillor McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. And thank you also to all the officers that have put so much work into bringing this report to us, because it is, as councillors would see, an advocacy strategy that touches on a broad range of areas of council interest, links directly, of course, to our council plan. And in the case of this particular item. And in the case of this particular item, um, is probably one of the most significant outcomes we could achieve as Darabin on, on our own, which is different to the advocacy that we do, um, collectively through our regional greenhouse alliance. And I would just point out that, um, we haven't sought to replicate in our advocacy strategy here, um, all the positions we have in relation to sustainability, climate change and the environment. Um, this is the one which we have prioritised or propose to prioritise here, um, which is to really position Darabin as the first, um, renewable energy hub. And there's, uh, obviously quite a bit of commentary in, in the report in relation to what that means, the context of that. In relation to this, I would just say to councillors that there is a, um, an opportunity here which cuts across every part of our community, whether it's the residential experience, whether it's the industry experience, the commercial experience, um, and also the experience of people that maybe, may, maybe don't live in Darabin but actually interface with Darabin, um, which is that there is going to be a, a part of, of Melbourne, metropolitan Melbourne, that is well positioned to take up this opportunity. Um, Darabin has a proud history, um, in relation to initiatives such as the Solar Savers Programme, which really laid the foundation for the state government's Solar Victoria Initiative, which I note today, Mayor, um, was again extended and now expanded to hot water systems, which is great to see. We've been the, the city that declared a climate emergency. We've done the, um, the amazing work about the power purchase agreement. Um, this is the next frontier in positioning Darabin, um, in this space. And I really endorse the work of our officers to bring this to us and, uh, and that's all I have to say on the matter. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Councillor Rennie?
I'll keep it very brief. Um, there's a number of matters in this item, some of which relate to responding to the climate emergency and others that relate to our natural environment. And these are interconnected, um, but at the same time it is a board priority area. One of the things I'd really like to highlight is advocacy that I believe is really required, um, to the federal government to invest in the national energy grid and unblock the regulatory barriers to accelerating a transition to renewable energy and nets zero emissions as quickly as possible. Um, there are regulatory barriers that actually make it more difficult for our community to, um, do things like micro grids and power sharing. And, you know, it would be great if they could be overcome because we know how much our community cares about, uh, action in that area.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Um, are there any further speakers? Councillors, as there are no further speakers, I'll put the item number eight point ten. Did you want to speak, councillor? Oh, eight point ten one to the vote. All those in favour? That's been carried unanimously. Can we ask councillor Hannon please to return the, to the chamber? So councillors, we're going back to item number eight point ten. That excludes, um, the conflict that councillor Hannon had in relation to his employment. And can we have a copy? We'll just wait for councillor Hannon. I know you want to move that councillor. Or you, what, do you have some questions or move? So I'll wait. We have an amended officer's recommendation. And then we'll wait for councillor Hannon and then we'll ask for questions to the officers and then we'll ask for any further questions. Now councillors, before we ask officers any questions, I believe we have an amended officer's recommendation. We'll put that on the screen. Do we have any, did you want to speak to the revised officer recommendation?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, just to share councillors, we're putting this amendment forward just to deal with some administrative, um, errors in the report that are arising from it carrying over from March.
Thank you. Councillors, this is the revised officer's recommendation. Do we have any, do we have any questions to the officers? And I believe there's been many, many amendments that have been circulated. So do we wish to address amendment after, we'll, we'll address amendment at one minute, one amendment at a time. But do we have any questions in relation to the report itself? No. So councillors, do I have councillor, councillor Williams was first, as I indicated. Councillor Williams, do you have an amendment?
No, no.
Would you like to speak? Go ahead. Do, sorry, do I have a second, uh? Councillor Dimitriadis. Councillor Williams?
This report is aimed at influencing public policy change and attracting support and funding that relates to the council plan, as well as council's other strategies, advocacy related to Darabin's social, economic, health, wellbeing, community infrastructure, environmental and sustainability. In our council vision and our four-year council plan is focused on advocating for outcomes that will help foster a more prosperous, vibrant and sustainable Darabin. What this report does, it encapsulates the direct and indirect four-year council plan as well as the priorities of best positioning council strategy, coordinated and effectively best positioned council to influence and secure new outcomes from federal and state government. It will also include, but not just limited to, to buil- building awareness, momentum and support for local key priorities amongst departments, local government, organisations, community organisations and local residents. Meetings with parliamentaries, parliamentary, hang on, parliamentaries. Parliamentaries, I don't, I'm, sorry.
Parliamentary.
Engagement with departments, policy submissions to parliamentary inquiries, applications to grant funding programmes. Uh, we'd like to lead in advocacy priority pillars which complement and align with the existing council plan, such as the environment, climate emergency and circular economy. Fairness and equal, equal, sorry, equity, sustainable transport and connectivity, community wellbeing and infrastructure, prosperous, creative and livable Darabin. To increase investments in early intervention and tertiary mental health services, as the North has one of the highest impacts of mental health issues than any other part of Darabin or all of Victoria. Advocate for dedicated health services in the North Region. Campaign on improvements for walking, cycling, transport including new bus routes, extensions to tram eleven, accessible stops and suburban rail loop. Implement and advocate strategies to increase the minimum wage, increase job seeker payments, partner with other levels of governments to lift their commitment to sustainable economy and sustainable transport skill development. Secure manufacturing investments in Darabin through the North and West Melbourne. Collaborative work with other local governments to implement road safety, increase annual funding and road safety infrastructure advocated. Advocate with Melbourne Water to secure funding to improve the water quality to Edwards Lake in Reservoir.
Ten seconds.
Partner with the community and stakeholders to advocate to ensure the protection of the Straff Allen as public land for long term and to enable better management of the kangaroo population. Develop an advocacy chat strategy to drive community and business use of solar panels. Oops, sorry.
Thank you, councillor Williams. That was quite extensive. Thank you. Councillor Dimitriadis?
I'll reserve my right for now.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I have a, an amendment that I'd like to include as part of the advocacy strategy. And it was sent, um, in this afternoon to councillors and officers.
Councillors, uh, we are approaching, fast approaching ten o'clock. I will ask for a procedural motion to extend it. I'll wait a few more minutes. Continue councillor Greco.
So I'm just waiting for the motion to come up so people can have a look at it.
Is that your amendment, councillor Greco? Do we have a second, uh? Is that acceptable? Actually, is that acceptable to councillor Williams and councillor Dimitriadis?
Yes, not a problem.
Thank you. So we don't need to debate it. Um, we'll... So, um, we've, would you, would you like to speak to it, councillor Greco?
So I assume that it's been accepted by the movement.
Been accepted, yes.
Yeah. Like, I thank the movement and sector for incorporating this into the, um, in, into the motion. And just firstly, a few words about the advocacy strategy. I think it's a great piece of work that has been done. Um, it actually summarises, uh, what this council is about and what this council wants to achieve. It does it over, over a four-year period, but what's also important that it breaks it up, um, year by year. Um, and it prioritises some of the, um, advocacy campaigns that we need to engage in. One of the, um, primary campaigns that we're currently engaging in is the campaign to save the Preston market. And, um, I, and I note that that's, um, um, listed in the advocacy strategy and has been given top priority in the, um, in the next few months. There's lo- lots of other things and I'm sure councillors will speak to a lot of those things. I'll just use the next minute just to highlight the particular point that I've raised. Um, when I looked at the policy, we do a lot of work in relation to cultural diversity. One, this council is, you know, is considered to be, uh, one of the leaders, so i- in relation to this space. Uh, but when I looked at the policy, when I looked at the advocacy strategy, it, it, it was a bit weak in, in relation to, um, you know, what we're advocating for. So what I've put up there is, um, is to advocate to the state government that a, a new act is introduced, uh, which is basically based on the, um, Gender Equality Act. And, um, and the background to this was that the Victorian Multicultural Council and the Ethnic Communities Council of Victoria were advocating for us, for this type of act, um, to include the, to increase the participation of people from diverse backgrounds in, in government, in leadership positions, um, across the public sector. Uh, unfortunately, the government didn't cross the line on that and sort of fell short. And, but, um, I think it's something that we need to advocate for.
In seconds.
Uh, in order to ensure that the, um, that the makeup of organisations reflects the community, um, that it serves. So that's why I've included this additional, um, advocacy point as part of the strategy.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers?
Mayor, could I move a continuance, uh, for an additional thirty minutes?
I was gonna ask, yeah. Um, all those in favour?
I'll, I'll second that, ma'am.
I'll second it. So all those in favour? That's been carried unanimously. Thank you. Uh, are there any further speakers?
Mayor, I've got an amendment which has been circulated to councillors and officers.
Thank you. You accept that, councillor Dimitriadis?
Uh, no.
Um, councillor McCarthy, um, it's accepted by the, so... Yeah. So, sorry, I didn't hear what you said. Councillor McCarthy?
Oh, sorry. I think I needed a second, uh, because it wasn't...
Yeah, yeah. Councillor Newton. Councillor McCarthy?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, so the, the point is quite simple. It, it draws out one of the items that's in the advocacy strategy, which is council's existing position in relation to, um, the options at Bell Station. As councillors would be aware, um, the, the state of play at the moment is that the LXRP has decided to position the, um, the car park at Bell Station on the east side. Um, council has advocated alongside the Bell Residents Group and others in the community, um, to go west, um, to look at a western option. Um, failing that though, and it appears seemingly more likely, um, that, uh, the car park will be on the east side. Um, council has also put forward an advocacy position to say that if the car park was to proceed on the east side, um, to protect the residential amenity of the residents in those streets, um, which would in fact be the entry points to the car park, um, that council would seek to ensure that the entry point to the car park, even if it was on the east side, is via, via the west, via Blanche Street. And, uh, and of course, um, likely it would also be entering from the east via Railway Place. Um, serious significantly, Mayor, um, your own advocacy, um, last year and, and on behalf of council, um, made it really clear that council is eager to protect the local amenity to not see these four streets to become the de facto driveways to the car park, which is what we expect would happen. And so therefore this is simply to signal council's strong desire, which is already an existing position of council. This is not establishing a new position. This is a position that we've already taken in this chamber. Um, but to signal our strong desire to see those roads closed, um, to through traffic, um, should the state government proceed with the car park as, as planned and not allow a western access point via Blanche Street. Um, we did have a question about this this evening, Mayor, and, uh, which was to make explicit that con- particular element and to s- to give the two state entities adequate notice of council's desire in this regard, and that's all seeking to do.
Thank you. Councillor Newton, oh.
I've just got a question. Um, is this the current motion? We've got, I've just...
This is an amendment? Just one moment. I'll go to Mr Mann. Okay.
Through you, um, Mayor, the amendment being debated is, uh, the addition of point five. Um, I would note that council's already made an amendment to the substantive motion and that what was on screen didn't show that. But what you're considering at the moment is the addition of point five.
The last line in bold, which is what this council does. So councillor Newton?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. So I think what the Bell Residents Group has done in terms of advocating to have the, um, go west side has been really incredible actually. So I'm sure everyone's seen the video that that group's put together. And as councillor McCarthy said, this is also the council's position. So when we're talking about an advocacy, an advocacy strategy, this is something where the council's aligned, the community's aligned in wanting this outcome. So no reason not to push for it at state government level.
Thank you. Do we have any further speakers? We should get the amendment up on the screen, please. It's councillor McCarthy's and item number five, but I believe that councillor Dimitriadis would like to speak to it.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The reason I'm, uh, not in support of this is because this project has already undergone rigorous research and, um, it's currently underway. So it's going to be finished very shortly, is my understanding. And, um, proposing closures to roads or other, um, positions that we've taken previously, um, have not been very effective. So I'm just a bit cautious about this, these particular road closures because we don't know what it would mean to the overall area of, um, of the whole station precinct. So, um, I won't be supporting this amendment. Um, we don't have any research or evidence on what this means from, from council. So, um, I don't, I don't believe it's a, it's a good way to just decide to close roads. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Rennie?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Messina. Council undertook significant design work to actually put a proposal to LXRP and the state government. And our own design team determined that access to the car park from the west would be preferable. It's not true to say there hasn't been work in this space and it's also not true to say that the project is too far.
Point of order, Mayor, please. Uh, ten point one, I think it's E. I find it offensive. I didn't say that there wasn't enough report on the parking on the left side. I'm talking about closure of the street. There was not any, um, evidence or reports on closing those streets.
No, that's not what I heard. Continue councillor Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor Messina. It's also, uh, not true that it's too late to undertake, uh, these design changes. We saw with the reservoir level crossing removal that council continued to advocate to the very end and we continue to achieve positive changes for members of our community, uh, towards the end of the realisation of that project. And we know that we got a much better outcome for the reservoir community as a result of our advocacy. We are here to represent our local community and our local residents. And I have met with Bell residents and people in those streets on multiple occasions. And it is our responsibility to represent the interests of our local communities. And they are very clearly saying they do not want their streets to become access pathways to a car park. Uh, anyone who knows those streets closely would know that they are inherently unsuitable for that kind of road usage. Um, these are quiet, very quiet suburban streets where kids are out playing cricket on the road, an activity that will completely disappear if people are zooming down their street to find a car park. And the traffic, make no mistake, the traffic will not just be the number of cars that park each day in that car park. It will be the four, four cars for everyone that finds a car park that drive down and have to do a U-turn because there isn't a car park available. So I urge all councils, coun- councillors to stand up for our local residents and to advocate for their streets to remain quiet residential streets as they are now.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Are there any further speakers? Councillor, did you have your hand up? Councillor Lawrence, yeah?
Um, Mayor Messina, I have a question for the officers.
Um, we're entered into debate. There's, um... Is it in relation to item number five?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll allow it, but I generally won't allow it when there's a significant amendment, and this was circulated, oh no, it was not circulated. So councillor Lawrence, please ask your question to the officers.
Um, I'd just seek some advice from the officers. Obviously, I do recall the motion about blocking streets, and that was in the context of a struggle or debate with the state government about where the car park was going to go. Now that the state government's made a decision, have we had any updated advice from our transport officers about the feasibility of this kind of political action?
Thank you.
Thanks for your question, councillor Lawrence. I'd like to take that on notice, if you don't mind, and get back to you.
Thank you. Councillor Williams, is this a question? I was only allowing one question.
Can I just get confirmation or clarification that the previous resolution that came to cancel was not a full closure of these streets, but was to do with a stopping of a right-hand turn coming out of those streets? Can I get clarification? Exactly what was the previous resolutions that came to cancel?
Councillors, before we answer that question, I asked that you circulate your amendments beforehand, so these questions the councillors can ask to the officers prior and not at this time of the hour of the evening. Now, can we please have that question addressed? Thank you.
Through you, mayor. My understanding of the amendment being considered is it's consistent with council's current position. And so the closure you're looking at in that wording is to the west, which is on the railway end of those streets, not the high street end of those streets? And that the right-hand turn ban that you might be thinking about, councillors, is at the high street end of those?
Thank you. No further questions, councillors. We've heard from councillor McCarthy, councillor Newton, councillor Rennie, councillor Dimitriatus, he's reserved her right. Are there any further ques... Sorry, this is in relation to the amendment itself? Are there any ques... Are there, sorry, any further speakers? Councillor Lawrence.
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor Messina. Look, in terms of this number five, I'm concerned that this amendment's come late, we haven't had off of advice on it, given that, you know, now fixed position. I understand, you know, the strong desire, you know, to show the middle finger to the state government and all that on this, but I just wonder whether this issue should be number five in our advocacy compared to some of the other issues on this? And also whether or not we need actual more evidence here, because does this actually allow any access to the car park? Are we trying to build a Berlin Wall? I'm not remembering actually what this actually refers to. So we don't have that in front of it, would have been handy to have us in front of us, so I'll be abstaining.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Mr Levy, did you want to correct the issues about this being number five on our advocacy statement? Because this isn't number five on our advocacy statement, as in the priorities, from my understanding, is what councillor stated.
Through you, mayor, I'll take that as a question. The effect of the amendment wouldn't be to make this the fifth priority, the effect would be to write to the state government. It wouldn't then result in an amendment to the strategy itself.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any further...
I'm happy to correct my statement then. I'm still concerned that we're elevating it in a motion to such high prominence which will take away from these other important issues.
Are there any further speakers? I'll put that item to the vote. All those in favour? That's been, that's councillor Hannan, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina, councillor Newton, councillor Rennie. All those against? Councillor Williams, councillor Dimitriatus, and abstaining, councillor Greco and councillor Lawrence, that amendment's been carried. Councillors, this now becomes incorporated in the amendment. Are there any further amendments, incorporated substantive motion? Are there any further amendments? Because I know that there are, because I personally circulated two, that I'm hoping that somebody will address.
Mayor, I'm happy to, I think there's a motion, I'm allowed to move another amendment, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep, so I'm happy to move your amendment in relation to the, I think it's called the amenity and graffiti parliamentary inquiry, if we can have that on...
Yes, and there's also an amendment to, that was circulated. Can I have my amendments, please?
Happy to have them both on screen, mayor.
There's also an addition to... Okay, we'll do them one at a time. I just thought for the purpose of saving time, we might address two at a time, because it is already ten bars then. Yeah, I think we'll put both in. Can I also put the other addition in, please?
Do you want me to read it out?
My understanding is that it was already, we'll just wait. Once I have it on the screen, it'll be moved, from my understanding, by councillor McCarthy. They were circulated earlier.
Yeah, back graffiti, yep. Happy to se... Happy to accept.
That's not right. Just one moment, there's an extra line. I sent it to them, there we are. Okay, we're going to deal with this one, it's on its own. So that was moved by councillor McCarthy, seconded by councillor Williams, is that correct?
I don't know if I can second it, I've accepted it into the motion.
Accepted in the motion, sorry. Is that acceptable to the second her?
No, sure.
Okay, so that's been, that becomes the motion. Did you want to speak to it, even though? No, we don't have to.
It's fine.
That means that we have to wait for the other delay, another delay for another amendment that's to be incorporated. So we'll wait, that becomes the motion itself. Can we have that on the screen? Do we have any further amendments?
That's fine.
We'll just take a break, sorry. Councillors, are there any further amendments to the advocacy strategy whilst we wait for the...
Mayor Messina, could I just make a point of clarification? Look, I've noticed that the last two amendments, the wording is not in tune with what the, the way that we've worded it.
I know, councillor Greco, I'm just waiting.
And I'm just making a suggestion, is that if we can perhaps leave some leeway for our officers to word it in a way that's consistent with the rest of the document.
I'm happy with that, thank you councillor Greco. I've noticed that there, I wasn't going to highlight that. We're just waiting for that other little amendment. But are there any further amendments to this advocacy strategy? Okay, we'll just wait for that and then we'll vote on that.
So while our officers are doing that, is it possible to ask the question, which is to carry on with what councillor Greco has mentioned, that the officer's recommendation, which is all about advocacy, strategy, Aboriginal people that contained in the Aboriginal advocacy, it's all about strategy, and yet we've now pulled out...
Just wait, we'll just wait for the, you're talking about the wording based on the officer's recommendation?
Well, yeah, because now numbers...
It'll be, it'll be consistent, what's in the report and the additions that we've considered, we're just waiting for the administration staff to put them up. When it is finalised and it's up on the screen, if it's just grammatical errors, then we'll let them go, and I'm sure the officers will scribe them accordingly. But if there's something significantly different, then we can address it here and now. But if it's just a few grammatical errors, I'm not going to. Yes, that is what I see. Are there any, is that acceptable to the mover and the second her?
Once again, can I ask that, what the extra addition, will it be in the document or are we mainly focusing on these two particular issues that stand out as part of that councils are endorsing?
You mean the item number two, councillor Williams? I understand that that's word by word up already on there. Is that what you're referring to?
My point is, so now we incorporate, I don't have an issue with five and six, but it sort of stands out to the heart of what this advocacy strategy is about, when, you know, we could have put number seven as Preston Market.
No, no, this is just additional to the report itself. It's not, it's not, it's not a hierarchy of importance for our advocacy piece, that doesn't change the hierarchy of it, councillor Williams.
Yep, that was what I was asking.
Does that address your question?
Yep.
Thank you.
Don't have a problem accepting it.
Thank you, councillor Dimitriatus.
No, sure, thanks.
Yes, okay. So we've heard from councillor Williams, councillor Dimitriatus reserves their right, and councillor Greco also spoke. Do we have any further speakers on this advocacy piece?
Mayor, can we just confirm that, sorry, just to be clear, point six is now incorporated into the motion?
Yes, yes, I've got, I've got the mover and the second her accepting those.
Okay, thanks.
Does anybody else wish to speak to this item? So we'll put that item to the vote. All those in favour?
Are we on this?
Yep.
It's not on the screen.
Yep, that's been...
This is the substantive?
Yes, yep. It's been carried unanimously.
So, no, isn't this the amendment?
Mayor, it's missing, it's actually missing the points that I'd proposed on screen.
Oh, okay. We're accepting this amendment, this then becomes substantive, including the item number five, which means a rejigging of the numbers.
I wanted to speak to the substantive.
You want to speak to the substantive?
And I also wanted to vote against the point that I voted against, so we have to split that particular item from, but I wanted to speak to the substantive.
Okay, can we get, okay. That was already voted on, it was lost.
What was, sorry?
Can we have a five-minute break, please? Can we cut the streaming for five minutes, please?
I don't know if you can in between a voting. I don't know if you can in between a voting.
Councillors, this is a motion that's been revised based on the amendments to date. We've heard from councillor Williams, councillor Dimitriades reserved their rights, and councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Lawrence?
Are we up to the substantive now?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. Yes, look, I'd like to speak in favour of the substantive motion. And in particular, point one, or the point just under number one, put forward by councillor Greco. It's a, it's a great advancement in the Labour Party that we have affirmative action. And it's also a great advancement that the state government is moving towards Gender Equality Act, which is actually putting into concrete action equality across genders inside our government departments and in fact even across this local government sector. And that's creating a whole lot of change and social change in inclusion. Not to mention previous acts such as lifting the Victorian Police to include over 30% of women, which occurred in the past. So these types of social changes, bringing in equality, bring great benefit to the state in productivity, in equality. Of course, affirmative action actually was taken from a 1950s US policy, which was based around incorporating previously ethnic groups that had been oppressed in terms of participation in economic life in the United States. African Americans in particular. So the notion of actually having structured inclusion so that our government sectors begin to reflect the people they serve is, is a great move. And there are some great barriers that we know from our own community. With new arrivals, in terms of getting the stepping stones to actually go into those sectors.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Are there any further speakers?
Mayor, could I move another continuance for 30 minutes?
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Williams. All those in favour? That's, the motion's been carried. Are there any further speakers? Given that it's 10.30 and we're going to be running out of time, so can I put this, councillor Dimitriades?
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to speak to the substantive. And I'd also like to request that point five gets split from the substantive, because I wanted to vote against that when we do vote. But overall, I'm very supportive of council having developed an advocacy strategy that responds to Darabin socio-economic health, wellbeing, community infrastructure, environmental and sustainability priorities. This strategy is intended to guide and support the ongoing advocacy of councillors and the council to help foster a more prosperous, vibrant and sustainable Darabin through the lead advocacy priority pillars and associated asks that councillor William listed earlier. Just to name a few topics, Darabin will be advocating to the federal and state governments as well as non-government organisations about mental health, infrastructure and support services, such as advocacy to have an orange door service in Darabin, young families and perinatal support services, advocacy regarding greater support for the aged and elderly, multiculturalism, asylum seekers and refugees, advocacy for early childhood and kindergarten investment, prevention of family violence and upgrades to John Caine Memorial Park in Thornbury. I look forward to seeing these topics in the 12-month 2022 advocacy platform, which will be considered at a future council meeting. But yes, I do have reservations about point five of this particular substantive motions, which I wanted to vote against, but still vote on supporting the advocacy strategy.
Thank you. Thank you for considering that, councillor Dimitriades. Are there any further speakers? We'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour?
Sorry, mayor.
We're not vote, I'm voting for the whole as it stands at the moment. I'm not splitting it. We're running out of time, councillor Dimitriades, but I've noted your comments. As I said, thank you very much.
But that just leaves me with voting.
That's what, we're waiting on it now. But can I have a show of hands, please? That's councillor, that's been carried unanimously. Thank you. Councillors, I'm going to ask for a procedural motion because I'm conscious of time and we really need to look at item number eight point one two. Can I have a procedural motion to, to go to item eight point two?
So moved, mayor?
Yep. Seconded, do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor McCarthy. All those in favour? Show of hands, councillors?
Mayor Messina, I didn't hear which one we go.
Procedural motion.
To listen to item eight point two. Appointment of independent HR advisor. Eight point one two. We're running out of time, councillor.
Eight point one two. Sorry, I heard eight point two.
Yep. So councillors, can I please have a procedural motion to hear item number, to reorder the agenda to hear item eight point one two? That's moved by, it was moved by councillor Rennie, seconded by councillor McCarthy. All those in favour? That's been carried by councillor Han and councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Dimitriades, councillor Messina, councillor Newton, councillor Rennie and councillor Greco. All those against? Councillor Lawrence is abstaining. Noted, that motion's been carried. Item number eight point two, councillors. Please keep in mind, there are some confidential details in the report. And if we need to go into camera, I will ask for a procedural motion to go into camera. Please be conscious of the privacy of the information. And I draw your attention to a supplementary confidential report on this matter that has been distributed to councillors this morning. If there are any questions on this matter and so far the process that has been undertaken and all the evaluation of submissions, I will seek officers' advice on the necessity, necessity, oh, necessity, necessity to close the meeting and deal with the matter in a closed meeting. In this case, we'll consider this item at the end of the meeting, which is, will be, I guess, the last item we address. Are there any questions to the officers? Okay. Councillor, sorry, councillors, Ms Olivia would like to declare a conflict and I'll invite Sam Hewitt to the chair and note that.
Thank you, mayor. So I'll declare a conflict in relation to this item and also eight point 11, which arises from my role as acting CEO.
Again, be mindful and I'll seek officer's advice if we need to go into camera. Thank you. Are there any questions to the officers? Councillor Dimitriades.
Thank you, mayor. Earlier this year, when we appointed the previous independent HR advisor, there was a confidential attachment. However, the officer recommendation was public and the public meeting minutes record, that was public too, about the company and the value of the contract that was awarded. So why does this similar process need to be done confidentially?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Messina. And I will be careful in terms of how I respond, given the notes about the confidential supplementary report. So with this item, we've obviously done it on a very quick turnaround, given the nature of the commercial arrangements that are in play and discussed in the confidential report. That's why that has been listed as a confidential item. That's, that's the reason for that approach.
Are there any further questions? Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you.
Are you moving the officer's?
I am moving the officer's recommendation.
Well, I have a seconder. Councillor McCarthy. Councillor Rennie? Would you like to speak?
Thank you. Look, I'll keep this brief. The CEO Employment Matters Committee requested via our HR people at council some submissions or expressions of interest from various experts in this field to provide HR support to council. A number of submissions were forthcoming. The CEO Employment Matters Committee considered all of those and in this case felt very clearly that there was a standout application and that we wished to make that appointment. So I expected to see the name up there. Should, should the name be in that? Just. Apologies, I'm just switching back to my confidential papers.
Sorry, mayor. That was what my question was about. I was wondering why it was all, that was confidential, but it wasn't in, the last time it was announced.
I think she, I think the officer already asked your question. I think you were referring to the name.
Sorry, I expected the report to be confidential, but the name of the appointee actually to be in the report.
That's right.
Just apologies and I.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor Messina. I might refer to the coordinator of council business in relation to the confidential nature and also in relation to the ability to put the name of the provider up on the screen.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Just wait for that to come up. Councillor, councillor Rennie?
Um, no, I don't think, oh, hang on.
Maybe through you, Mayor.
I'm just expecting it to look like it does in our confidential report where there's two points. Sorry, so we can take the time to get it right. I'll keep my speech short.
Through you, Mayor Messina. There's, there's two reports that councils received in relation to this matter. The first one is in the open part of the agenda and the recommendations. Michelle, if you could put those back on the screen. First two recommendations in the open part of the agenda. And the second two, which is the appointment, recommendation regarding the appointment of the supplier. No, the one with the four points. That's, that's, that's the officer's recommendation. It was in two, two reports. So that's the appropriate motion to be moved by council tonight. That'll point that supplier to provide independent HR advice.
Thank you, yes, I'm happy to move that. An apology is for the confusion because it didn't look like either of the recommendations before us. So I was saying that we undertook a process of reviewing the applications received from different candidates or businesses wanting to provide that independent HR advice to council. And David Priest was the standout. And it was, in fact, quite a simple decision for council. We look forward to him coming on board. We were very happy with Joe Camoni, who for various reasons is not able to provide that service to us for the next six months or so. And we are confident that David Priest will be available if and when the CEO Employment Matters Committee needs that independent advice and that we will be able to choose when that advice is required and therefore only pay for advice and attendance at times when we need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McCarthy?
I'll reserve my right, mayor.
Are there any further speakers? We'll put that item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, councillors, that's been carried unanimously. The next item we have to consider is, we'll go back to the agenda. It's item number eight 11, which is a composition of the CEO Employment Matters Committee and process to support the committee in proposed CEO recruitment process. Councillors, do I have a motion?
Mayor, there's a motion that you've circulated, which I'm happy to move on your behalf. If it can be, appear on screen.
On the screen, yep. That's moved by councillor McCarthy. Do we have a seconder?
I have an amendment.
You have an amendment? Yep. Are you, sorry, before we do that, are you, yeah, councillor McCarthy, councillor Dimitriades, and your amendment is?
To add my name.
To the?
CEO Employment Matters Committee.
I just need to make sure that.
It goes from seven to eight councillors.
Yep. Yep. Need to go to item point three. We need to amend item point three as well. Yeah, it might. I think it named.
That's right.
Did name, yeah. Is that acceptable to the mover and the seconder?
Who is the seconder?
Councillor Dimitriades is. I'm just wondering whether councillor Newton. That was, that amend, that amend, that means that we need to amend that to eight councillors in that item point four. It says seven still.
No, it says eight.
No. Item point four is still set. Councillor McCarthy, is that acceptable?
Sorry, mayor, I was just waiting to see if the change had been made to four. So that now makes the full committee membership, eight councillors plus the independent chairperson, and the quorum is five, is that?
That's correct.
The quorum would remain five.
Yep.
At that point in time.
Yep.
Just would check, so, and councillor Newton, the point three.
I've asked councillor Newton, she's not available.
That can remain, so.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of hours and days that are required for this councillor's advice.
Absolutely. I'm happy to accept the amendment, mayor.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to the amendment? Would you like to speak to the motion, councillor?
Yep, sorry, just, just checked. Thank you, sorry, I might have missed that. Thanks, mayor. Look, I'm moving this motion on your behalf, mayor. It is your, your, your motion and I acknowledge your work in relation to this. I, I think councillors would be aware that I have my, my reservations about dealing with this matter again. And I think that's well known. I was in the role of chairing this, this item when we dealt with it at the last council meeting. And I've expressed my views in the past. I think it's great that councillors are interested in being involved in the CEO recruitment process. I would say, having been through this process myself, it is a significant commitment. And, and I hope that every councillor that's put their hand up will bring their 110%, because it is a huge amount of time and effort that goes into this. In fact, many days we can expect. So I'm sure we're all across that component. I'm happy to support the mayor's proposal here, which for, which does a couple of things. One of which I think is really important is actually brings to council's attention the very important work that the mayor has done and I think also that the committee's done to develop. done to develop a framework for councillor involvement, which is actually already in practice. And that framework is about how all councillors are involved in a whole range of stages as has been outlined in previous reports in relation to both identifying elements of the process, providing input into those parts of the process, and of course also being involved in the various interview processes as well. What this does is effectively just goes that extra step further, which is on a temporary basis for the duration of that recruitment period, places significantly more councillors on the committee for that period, at which point the CEO Employment Matters Committee, following the recruitment of the CEO process, would return to the smaller size. So it's a way forward. I can see there's been a genuine attempt by the mayor to find a way forward, to respond to questions that have been raised by councillors who wish to be involved and I hope that in the spirit of unity, councillors can support the motion, get behind it and proceed. What I'm particularly interested in is actually the process, which is, which must be rigorous, it must be important. We are looking to find the person who is going to help lead our organisation over coming years and this is not a process that is, should be guided by politics. It shouldn't be a process that's guided by individual whims, it is about what is in the best interests of the organisation and the best interests of the city. And I just would reinforce that that is actually the guiding principle that everyone should bring to the table in relation to this. And I thank you, mayor, for your initiative in seeking to try to find a way forward for council.
Thank you. councillor Demetriades?
I'll reserve my right.
Are there any further speakers? councillor Lawrence?
Just briefly, Mayor Messina, just because it's getting very late and apologies to staff, how long this has taken, but I just reiterate my support for this substantive motion, which I reiterated at a previous meeting.
Are there any further speakers? councillor Greco?
Hi, thank you, Mayor Messina. Look, I'm really encouraged that this motion has come back to the council. There's been a lot of flip-flopping in relation to this particular issue and I think it's important that all of us that want to be on that committee are on that committee. It's a committee that's charged with an important task and I think that all councillors need to be on that committee in order to have equal ownership over the process because it's such an important job in terms of what that committee is going to do and propose. And also I think that bringing this back to the council, I believe that it will actually help to heal the council and there's been a lot of division in relation to this particular issue and that's been unfortunate that there has been that division and there has been that control by a certain part of this council over that process. I think this opens it up and I just ask councillors, irrespective of your previous position that you had, to really reflect on what we're doing here and as a sign of unity and as a sign of working together, to reconsider your previous positions so that we can all work together for what will be a very, very important task and a task that, as has been noted, that will be watched over in relation to how we achieve the recruitment of our next CEO. So I look forward to this. I thank the mayor for showing some leadership on this and bringing this back to us because I really believe that we can show an act of unity and to put politics aside so that we all could work on this together and achieve a common outcome.
Thank you councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers? councillor Reni?
Thank you, mayor. I will not be voting in support of this motion tonight. In December 2020, faced with significant interest from all councillors and being on the CEO Employment Matters Committee, I actually made the suggestion that all councillors could be on this committee instead of it being a committee of four, which had been the case for as long as I have any sense of what happened at Darabben. That was a suggestion I grew to deeply regret and I grew to regret that suggestion because in my 30 years of professional life, I have never seen such appalling disruptive behaviour in a committee, such that the committee was barely able to function. Make no mistake that when I moved a motion in December 2021 to return the committee to being a committee of four, it was solely as a result of the inability of the committee to function in any reasonable way. It is my sincerest hope...
Point of order, sorry, point of order. That's a misrepresentation. I don't believe there was dysfunction in that committee, so that's 10.1H misleading...
Dysfunction in terms of perhaps a meeting run...
Misfunction was what councillor Reni said.
Dysfunction was what... Can I just say, I was part of that committee. Agenda that should have been finished in an hour, it took two and a half hours, so there was a bit of dysfunction, so I have to tend to agree with councillor Reni. So I'm not ruling on it. Continue councillor Reni, and it is subject of interpretation. As per the point of order, and I'm happy to read it out to you, councillor Demetriades, it states here that 10.1, valid points of order. Number two, rising to express a difference of opinion or contradict a speaker is not grounds for raising a point of order. So please continue councillor Reni.
Thank you, mayor. It is my very sincere hope that that type of disruptive and unhelpful and antagonistic adversarial behaviour is not repeated over the next six months and keeping in mind that hope, I will engage in this committee in a productive and collegiate way and I trust that all of my colleagues will take this opportunity, if it's afforded to them, to do likewise. Recruiting a CEO is an important role. I'd like to acknowledge the work of the mayor in coming up with a framework which already anticipated and outlined ways in which all councillors could be involved. I don't know that this adds much to that but clearly it's important to some councillors and I look forward to working with everyone and hope that people can take my reflections on board.
Thank you councillor Reni, I just want to make a point that I did allow extra time, given that there was a point of order during that process. Are there any further speakers? It is 10.52, I'll just let councillors also know that. Continue.
I'll be really quick and just say, look, councillors only employ one person and that is the CEO. I really look forward to working together for the greater outcome of hiring the future CEO of this council. I know, considering what we've gone through previously, but we are looking at a different situation and I hope that we can all work together in unity.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Are there any further speakers because councillor Demetriades did reserve her right? councillor Demetriades?
Thank you, mayor, and thank you for bringing this motion again to council. I still have reservations about only being on the committee during the recruitment of the CEO and not a long-term, this is not a long-term commitment, however, we'll be supporting this motion and that's because we are, we represent single-member wards now, so the fact that you take away our representation on a committee that our only job is to hire, one of our important jobs is to hire a CEO, means that our ward does not get represented on that committee. Now, there's a few points in regards to dysfunction. If we say that dysfunction is, if councillor Reni mentions dysfunction and it's about, you know, not being given a, the CEO's contract so we can see it and then asking to actually see the CEO contract and we're being told not to see it, well, I don't see that as dysfunction if we're questioning why we can't see the CEO's contract when that's our only employee and then it gets affirmed by legal advice. So I do have reservations about some of the aspects that are, that occur on this committee. We have an unelected chair with voting rights who was involved in hiring the previous CEO, was involved in the overview and voting on KPIs and was also, and now is also involved in hiring a new CEO with voting rights and will also be involved in...
Point of order, ma'am.
Yeah, can you please retract that because she did not actually vote during the process at all?
She has a voting right, so if she wanted to...
She did not vote though councillor Demetriades. I will allow another extra...
Point of order, ma'am, I'm not sure the number, but I think you're drifting into discussing confidential matters that were in the previous committee. I'm not sure...
I don't think I am, but thank you councillor Lawrence. I will give you an extra... Are you laughing councillor Lawrence? Because that's actually disrespectful councillor Lawrence.
I'm being, I'm saying very clearly, I wasn't pointing the accusation at you, I just said collectively.
We're laughing and that's not, this is not the chamber for laughing. Continue councillor Demetriades. Enough councillor Lawrence.
That's my normal character.
Councillor Demetriades, you have a minute, can we reset the clock to a minute, please? Thank you councillor Demetriades.
As I was saying, I have reservations about what's been occurring on this committee and if asking questions is a sign of dysfunction and/or asking a question in a different way because we're told we can't see the CEO contract, for instance, which is a fundamental right of any employer, I don't, I find that quite hurtful, I don't think it is dysfunction, it means that, you know, we need to be listening to each other to work together. But I'm really hoping that we can work together to make sure that we hire a CEO for the community and for the best interest of the whole community.
Thank you councillor Demetriades. Are there any further speakers? Thank you councillors, we'll now put this item to the vote. All those in favour of item number 8.1? That's councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy...
It's actually 8.11.
Oh, sorry, did I say 1, 1, 1? Thank you councillor. Councillor, sorry, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Demetriades, councillor Messina, councillor Greco, councillor Lawrence, all those against, that's councillor Hannan and councillor Newton and councillor Reni is abstaining. No, thank you councillors. I just want to, we have, do we think we have my time? We've got four minutes.
Mayor, I believe that the rules state that if we believe we can finish within 15 minutes of the finishing time, we can continue and I believe, I believe that we can.
You should, yep. Yeah, let's do that. Yeah, let's get Rachel back in. There's insects everywhere. It's all right. Answered my own question. Stephen Ma, there's going to be, there's actually an amendment that was circulated by councillor Newton to this particular one. Put that up on the screen.
So it's still councillor Newton's motion?
Yeah, it's councillor Newton's motion. But I will wait for Mrs Libia to return. This room certainly has had challenges tonight. Too hot, too cold, insects everywhere.
So it's not just me, I had an insect on my desk?
That's what's happening. Thank you. Councillors, now we move over to item 9, notice of motions, 9.1, which is recognising the celebrating leaders and who have advocated to increase the rights and participation of people with disability. This is councillor Newton's notice of motion and she has made an amendment which becomes an alternate motion. That's moved, is that your, that's moved by councillor Newton and I'm assuming, oh, sorry, councillor Williams, sorry, because I noticed you assisted with it. Councillor Newton?
Thank you, Mayor Messina, I'll be brief as it's 11 o'clock. I initially thought of doing something along these lines because we have the Australian of the Year, Dylan Olcott, living in Northgate, which is incredibly exciting and I know that the mayor has written to him already to congratulate him, but I thought about if there's anything more that Darabben council could do, which is why we now have point two, receives a report which explores ways in which participation and advocacy by people with disabilities could also be recognised and celebrated within the Darabben Community Awards. But we had a conversation about it today and councillor Reni did help me with bringing this alternate motion to the council that allows us to look a little bit more broadly at the Darabben Community Awards and if they are hitting the right mark and to do a review, to check on their effectiveness, if they are celebrating rewarding achievements with a line with Darabben's community vision. So I think this alternate motion really does give us a broader scope to look at the best way that we can do these awards going forward, so I hope to have unanimous support from the councillors.
Thank you. Councillor Williams, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just quickly, I really look forward to the report and look at all the different possibilities to, obviously to include our Darabben disability committees and have feedback from them also, so I look forward to it and thank you for bringing this to council. Councillor Newton?
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There are none, let's put that item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you councillors, that's carried unanimously. And the next item we have considered in notice of motions is item number 9.2, commitment to Indigenous land management. Councillor Greco?
I'll be moving that.
Yeah, I just want to check because I know that you amended it, I just want to check. Do we have a second up? Second up by councillor Reni, would you like to speak to your notice of motion?
Thank you, Mayor Messina, it's pretty late in the night, but I must say that probably this is the most important motion that I've moved in council in the last 13 years and I'm proud that we have the idea of handing back land in our council plan. And what this motion does is that it starts the process, it asks to start the process and the conversation that we need to have with the Warrungurrie Corporation. It'll be a long process but a very important one and a very special one for the city of Darabben. It will need to be a very sensitive and respectful and a non-divisive conversation that we have with the Warrungurrie Corporation. And what's important in the work that we do in Malaysia to this space of handing back land to the Warrungurrie is that we need to take the community with us. That is a fundamental requirement as we engage in this process. What this proposal does, which is part of our council plan, it actually enables council to go beyond just a simple acknowledgement and recognition of the Warrungurrie and of our First Australians. We do that pretty well in relation to particularly, we're one of the first councils to not recognise Australia Day and which was, which many other organisations and councils followed suit. And so we need to go to the next horizon and the next horizon, I believe, is having a conversation about land. We know that land is very important and very fundamental to the Warrungurrie and to First Australians. And so it's also, it's important that the council takes a lead in this particular space, which I think will be, will put us in good stead with the Warrungurrie and not only with the Warrungurrie but will can lead as a good example to many other councils across Victoria and I would say across Australia. Councillors, I've just come back from seven days in Uluru with my partner and it was interesting to see there that in 1985, the federal government handed over Uluru back to the Indigenous people there. That's a wonderful model that I think that a municipality like ours could follow on a much more micro level, obviously, but it'll be a wonderful thing for us to do. And finally, I would say, councillors, that I think we need to immediately write to the... And finally, I would say, councillors, I think we need to immediately write to the Wurundjeri Corporation to express what our intention in this space is and so they can make some considered decisions and then we can work together with them in embarking on this historic and important task.
Thank you councillor Greco. Thank you. Councillor Rennie?
Thank you councillor Greco and I do believe that we can do better than the federal government who gave back Uluru and then proceeded to allow people to walk all over it for several decades. And I think that goes to the fundamental issue here, which is that of listening deeply to Wurundjeri about what they want and how they would like this process to be conducted and undertaken. Certainly I know that when I say that I acknowledge that I'm on Wurundjeri land or when I wear my t-shirt that says always was, always will be, that comes from profound understanding that we are the beneficiaries of being on stolen land. And so in fact, when we talk about giving back land, I'd say there is almost an error in that framing, which is that this land is not ours to give back. And so at the foundation to my way of thinking is a recognition that this is Aboriginal land and what we need to do is have a deeply respectful conversation in which we listen more than we talk about what the process could be for restoring land to the traditional owners. And so, you know, I believe, you know, I have no doubt that everyone here will be on this journey that we are unanimous in our desire to have this conversation.
Thank you councillor Rennie. Are there any further speakers? Councillors, I've put this important motion to the vote on item number 9.2. All those in favour? Thank you councillors, that is carried unanimously. Councillors, the next item on the agenda is item number 10, urgent business. There are none. The next item is 11, consideration reports considered confidential. There are none to debate. Item number 12, closer meeting. Is there no further business this evening? I'd like to declare the council meeting closed at 11.07pm. Thank you very much councillors. Thank you John, for your attendance and the acting CEO. Have a great night and drive safely. And we can now turn off the live streaming.